Hi, Mike Lynn.
Hi, Mike Lynn.
How are you?
Thank you.
So we have to have people go downstairs?
We are well over fire code.
Yes. Basically, the number of chairs here is fire code, but then maybe ten. Okay. Every chair is taken, everyone standing puts a sign. Do you want I have Jeff say that, or do you want me to?
You know, you can have a place for me.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna do that. It's too much.
Oh, it does. Back in the background, maybe.
I told you. I wanted to. To be the person who had ready him.
Yeah.
Visible than him.
Actually, the only thing is, like, we don't tell me.
Henry's. Awesome.
He's not speaking. Excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, honestly, I don't even know.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. We are over capacity, so we do need some people to go downstairs to the overflow room. It is being livestreamed downstairs. If you have submitted a request to speak tonight, we will wait for you to come back upstairs. But again, we are over capacity in this room, and we will need some people to watch it downstairs in the Don Dodge Auditorium.
All right.
Holcomb.
Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If the clerk will take the role. Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Boem.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present. Item two, an addition. Are there any other additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Yeah, Lisa, if I could, I want to put under 7A for new business, intent for a general welfare resolution, so we can discuss that.
Support.
Any other changes?
Actually, hold on now. So the addition should be A, that'll be B, David.
Okay. Make it B. The other ones, the addition you already had, their proclamation will be 7A then.
I'll take a motion.
We had a motion a second already.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Citizens wishing to be heard? Jessica Holcomb?
I have.
Sarah Schmaltz? Sarah Schmaltz? So I flipped it over because those were the ones that were submitted first. Okay, so first. Kim Fenner. Pam Binnsfield.
Lisa, if I could. I'll assure you where I'm going to be the Sergeant of Arms tonight, and right about with 20 seconds to go, in three minutes, I will get, let you know that you have 20 seconds to go. It's not to be rude or anything, but you do get three minutes to speak.
Sure, thank you. Good evening. Since the last meeting, I have spent a large amount of time sending each of you information regarding the lies and misinformation that Dr. Mercantant has been feeding this county. I don't know who the originator of this deception is, as these are stories being regurgitated by the mainstream media, the school districts, members of this board, our state health department and governor, and the administration occupying the White House. At some point, it needs to end. I, as well as hundreds of thousands of others, are here to make sure the truth is heard. My series of emails included an extensive look at ivermectin and the overwhelming evidence of its safety, efficacy, in not only treating COVID-19, but in many other illnesses over the last 30 years. I included a list of highly respected and educated doctors, including, but not limited to, consultants to the WHO and NIH scientists that support the use of ivermectin and oppose the use of masks, social distancing, and the non-FDA-approved vaccines because of the actual science. I addressed the flaws in the PCR tests and how the results are being manipulated to fuel this pandemic, as well as including the counts of probable causes and not counting any of the vaccinated individuals. There was a lengthy email on the efficacy of vaccines versus natural immunity, and a three-part email outlining in detail the multitude of laws being broken and how it's fully in your power to remove the Health Department Director. I urged you to ask Dr. Mercantant and Mr. Fletcher about the information I provided. Did you? If you did, what did they have to say? Did either of them provide studies, data, and actual proof to counter mine? I think it's safe to assume no. I say this because they have yet to provide it to the public. My correspondence to you included at least 20 sources for you to reference, and more have come to light since then. A few of those included lawsuits that have been won here in Michigan by average, no nothing, no medical or law degree conspiracy theorists. Well, that's what Dr. Mercantant and others may call us. We usually like to refer to ourselves as parents, Americans, and patriots. And we will stand united, because you can give us all your non-science, but until you provide your science, that argument just doesn't stand up, and we're not buying it. Thank you.
Stephen Semasko?
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Before you start the clock, Dave, I spent a lot of time trying to convince some of you fellows on the Board and ladies over the years, and didn't do too well. I'm going to try again. It's my way of thinking.
Okay.
The, I'm a lifelong resident of the county, third generation, reside in Kenoke Township with my wife Cathy, got six grandchildren, five daughters, practiced law for 36 years, half-time as an appointed assistant prosecutor, as an appointed public servant, other half in private practice. I've held appointed positions, was elected four times, as county commissioner for District One, elected public servant. I'm here tonight hoping to make a positive contribution to some of the debate. I provided information to commissioners a couple weeks ago, and thought it was my obligation to come here and say a couple things. It's clear to me, first of all, as a lawyer, that this order was issued with lawful authority under state law and our state constitution. The issue is more of discretion. It's clear to me as a lawyer that the issuance of the order is not mandatory in the form in which it was issued. It is indeed an act of discretion. I've served many terms as a commissioner, observed the operations of our Health Department firsthand. I can tell you that Dr. Mercantant at all times has performed her duties with competence and professionalism in all the times I spent with her. As an officer of the court, I appear before the courts, and she's provided both competent and professional oversight to the courts that has kept our court functioning during these tough times, to the point that our courts have some of the best Schmaltz backlogs of cases in the state of Michigan, and it's due in part to how she manages approvals for operations. Not once did I question her judgment until now, and the only real problem I have here tonight that I want to pass on is I believe that quarantining healthy people based on close contact with an infected person is wrong. It's unnecessary, it's harmful, and a violation of our personal liberty, a disservice to the community. Likewise, I believe that elected officials allowing an appointed health director to quarantine healthy people in close contact based on CDC directions or federal law is also wrong, unnecessarily harmful, a violation of our personal liberty, and a disservice of the community. On balance, Dr. Mercantant has served our community well, can continue to do so, but should be accountable to those she serves with appropriate oversight from this board. The Health Department order was issued by a duly-appointed individual. She must answer to these elected county officials, our commissioners, who in turn must answer directly to the public and the nature of our elective system. Until last Thursday, when Dr. Mercantant rescinded her quarantine order, I believe that Dr. Mercantant must have believed the order was necessary, otherwise she would not have issued it. However, when she rescinded the order last Thursday, I was both.
20 seconds, Steve.
Both relieved and impressed that she had maybe reconsidered her medical necessity. However, it was actually the result of legislative funding provisions by the Republican Legislature that would have omitted funds from her department to cause her to do that. I was quite saddened by that, and I'll flip to the very end of what I had to say. The.
Please finish it up.
The doctors take the Hippocratic oath, first do no harm. Her order for quarantining healthy people was harmful. She pulled it for now. She did the right thing for the wrong reasons. Please do not let it come back. There's one thing I disagree with. It's one thing to disagree with those who govern you, as there's always another election around the corner, but when your action or inaction makes citizens fearful of their government, distrustful of government.
Finish it up, Steve.
Or very wrong, that is wrong. The quarantine order made people afraid. Unwillingness to provide oversight likewise makes people afraid. I would ask that the quarantine would be viewed as an unnecessary intrusion into our liberty with questionable benefit, and ask you to allow the citizens to be heard and to serve them well in their wishes here tonight. Thank you.
Rebecca Campo?
Hi there. Thanks for letting me have my time up here tonight. And I just want to address the Board as a mom of school-age children in all grade levels here in the county, and someone who supports public health practice. I'm a mom, and I'm also a public health nurse, working throughout this pandemic at the county health department, seeing perhaps a completely different side than what a lot of the citizens of the county see. I've talked to many who have been affected personally with COVID, called several days later to follow up to see how they're doing, and a husband or wife answers the phone and gave me the unfortunate news that they had passed from their COVID illness. There's a whole different side here, and I have to believe, as a mom and as a member of this community, that us who believe in mitigation strategies to fight this pandemic are the silent majority. We're the ones that are trusting the science and trusting what's put forth by the Health Department to keep our families and to keep the community safe. That is all. Thank you.
Carolyn Richards?
Hi, thank you. Prior to the last meeting, there was a FOIA request submitted to the St. Clair County Health Department requesting data on the number of close contacts and resulting quarantines for students, the number of students that were quarantined and subsequently hospitalized or deceased, number of quarantines that subsequently tested positive, and number of positive test results, ages and vaccination status. The response that was to that requested data was that it was all reported to the Michigan Disease Surveillance System and must be obtained from the state of Michigan. So the request for the above-mentioned data was then requested from the state of Michigan under the Freedom of Information Act. The response received was, "The request is denied." That is a quote. "To the best of the department's knowledge, information, and belief, this department does not possess or maintain records under the description you provided or by other names reasonably known to the department. You will want to contact your local county health department." Then, on Friday, September 17th, 2021, following the commissioner's letter requesting her to rescind the COVID-related health order, Dr. Mercantant not only refused, but she also was quoted in the Times-Herald and stated, "Data from completed COVID-19 case investigations from St. Clair County residents over the summer found nearly 30% of cases reported being in quarantine when becoming positive for COVID-19." First of all, according to the FOIA, the law requires the full or partial disclosure of previously unreleased information and documents controlled by the United States Government upon request. There are nine exemptions to this, and when I went through them, a local health department dealing with a public health order would not have fallen under any of those nine exemptions. Dr. Mercantant either broke the law by not releasing the data that was requested under the Freedom of Information Act, or she's lying about the data that she quoted to the Times-Herald. Secondly, when an employer, i.e. Board of Commissioners, requests an employee, i.e. Health Department Director, to do something, and the employee refuses, that is insubordination. Insubordination is the act of willfully disobeying a lawful order of one supervisor. It is generally a punishable offense in a hierarchical organization.
You have about 30 seconds.
Reason for dismissal. Parents have been publicly saying that these quarantines and mask mandates are unconstitutional. It wasn't until funding was threatened for this Health Department Director to rescind her order because it was stated that it is unconstitutional. Please tell us, the citizens of St. Clair County who have elected you to do a job while defending our God-given rights and the Constitution, how any of these are ethical, legal, or constitutional? Lacking down citizens in their homes, preventing citizens from earning a living, quarantine of healthy people and students, preventing them from receiving an equal education, sending out threatening letters. Thank you. Quarantine of healthy people and students and preventing them from receiving an equal education, not to mention with no data to back it up. Sending out letters threatening to detain our children or us against their will, but saying, "I really don't mean to or expect to follow through with it." Discrimination of people because of their medical choices, and now deeming parents who are taking an active role in their child's education by speaking out or peacefully protesting. Now we're called terrorists, and they're sending the FBI. It's time for all of you to read the Constitution, reread the oath that you took, or you will no longer be sitting in those seats.
Lindsey Davidson?
Hi, thank you for this time. At the last meeting, we spoke briefly about how we could lie with statistics. I'd like to start by listing a couple statistics I got from the Michigan.gov website about St. Clair County. Currently, there are 21,030 cases of COVID. There are 495 deaths from COVID. In other words, what we are seeing, out of the total population of 159,158 residents, according to the 2019 census, it's the only one I could find, was that 21,030 people out of all residents have gotten COVID over the past 19 months. That's 13% of the total population. In this county alone, there have been 495 people that have died that have COVID listed on their death certificate out of the, again, 159,158 residents. That is 0.3%. That is 0.3% of the total population of St. Clair County. It also means that 20,000 failed methods. Masks have been shown not to work to stop the spread. Per the CDC, the vaccines don't stop transmission, they only offer protection from COVID. Lockdowns and quarantines have proven to cause economical and psychological harm. Think of the precedence this sets for mandating quarantines. A mandatory quarantine without due process or penalties that will follow, compulsory vaccination for illnesses, societal and economical breakdown at the drop of a hat just to make it through. People are concerned. People are afraid. But they have choices. What happens when all of this settles down, and these are still in place? Precedents. What happens if we get a measles outbreak? What happens if the flu comes back? Now we have protective measures available, ready, to be implemented that trample the rights and freedoms of the people, to be wielded by those who are more concerned about their funding than what is right.
About 20 seconds, please.
As mentioned, the Health Director's only rescinded her order after the threat of losing $573,000 in funding. The quarantine order remained, if the quarantine order remained in place after October 1st. I don't trust anybody that puts money before the well-being of the people that they are elected to represent.
Please finish up.
I yield my time, Kalista Harmon.
And what about early intervention? The point of early intervention is to reduce the possible severity of symptoms that could worsen over the course or the outcome of an illness. We give fever reducers so that a high fever won't cause brain damage. We give cough suppressants to reduce the strain on the system, to allow a patient to rest more comfortably and allow their system to fight the illness. We know that early intervention is paramount in the treatments of cancers and other illnesses. Why is it being denied now? Ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, budesonide, cough medicines, fever reducers, anti-inflammatories, something. This is why we have doctors, to have, to take the patient's best interests and their medical history into consideration for what is going to be best for them. If we were truly in a pandemic, early intervention measures would be welcome, not suppressed, not banned. Denying these treatments only serves to harm Americans and, more directly, our St. Clair County residents. True caring for people during a pandemic would explore every possible treatment, making it available to doctors and hospitals to provide options to many people and their vast, differing medical histories. The CDC definition for a vaccine has changed now to say that it only provides protection against COVID. I can protect myself with proper diet, rest, hydration, supplements, as I have every single year during community spread. There is no confidence to have somebody with a lopsided view and a single, one-size-fits-all mindset to protect the citizens of this county.
Thank you. My wife will be panning to something out to you shortly. You can hand it out right now, Marcy, if you'd like. My name is Mike McClelland, and I've lived in St. Clair County most of my life. I'm here to give a different aspect on some of this with Dr. Merkentot. As I heard last week, it was a five, I think a five-two vote, and Marcy's been down here, and I thought, "Good. I don't want to go." And then I hear why she took it back, and this and that, and I thought, you know, Mike, you got to go. You should at least say something. So I'm going to give you guys a little insight of my dealings with Dr. Merkentot. I was Board President at Yale Public Schools, okay? During that time, she wanted to do something that, to me and my board, didn't feel was appropriate to the class, and she wanted to show the children how to put condoms on, how to put condoms on, how to take them off appropriately. She came to our board, and she showed us this. Through this time, our board was like, I let silence set in, a very odd situation. So we told Dr. Merkentot, Frank Johnson did, said, "We don't want that for our children. The board has decided." One thing that I found interesting in that time, I was just a young guy on that board at the time, and I said, "Frank, we did the right thing, right?" He said, "Of course you did the right thing. You don't need to be showing kids how to put condoms on." And he said, "Boy, was she mad." And I said, "She was mad? She was mad." And I said, "Man, she's mad. I got five boys. I don't need some lady coming to the school showing the kids that." So that's one instance we had, and we got also told that we were the only school in the county not to allow this at the time. Now, that could be changed. This was a while ago. Okay, in 2008, we did the vaccine for the swine flu. You remember that coming through? And she asked if she could use our school, and we said, "Yes, she can." Came, it went over very good. Time went by, she came back, and she wanted to use it again. And I said, "Man, I don't know much going on, or who's sick, or, I don't know. Well, why don't we ask her why, and we can do what we can do for her?" And then it came back, "Well, we have so much leftover vaccine." And I thought, I told the superintendent, I says, "Well, that's not our problem. We're not going to use our community, put that in the paper, and get that going because we have so much leftover vaccine." So at that time, if you look at that, the one form shows you the pandemic I got from the CDC, and you can see that, we highlighted it for you, so feel free to look at, there was no pandemic. And at that time, the WHO, actually, they threw, in the United States, we threw away 70 million vaccines, and the WHO had to put a special committee together to say, "Why did we overreact?" And if you look into the history of some of this, I don't want to spoon fit at all, but you'll see the United States guy who was involved in the WHO at that time. Very interesting. Next time in life, we met with Dr. Merkentot. Again, we didn't meet with her, we talked with her on the phone, my wife did. We're going to have a parade in Yale. So I said, "Marcy, I don't know about this. You want to do this?" Okay, she wanted to. I said, "Okay. We got to go ask the city." We asked the city. The city said, "Yeah." We asked the mayor. Mayor said, "Yeah." The police said, "Yes." I said, "Well, we can do it then. We got to ask the state of Michigan." The state of Michigan said, "Yes. You can close 19, you can do a parade. Let's do it." Next thing you know, we're getting calls from Dr. Merkentot saying, "No, no, no. You need to have signs up, you need to tell"
Please wrap it up, please.
You need to tell Thank you. So now, now we go on, and she calls again, and she says, "Well, you got to have signs out. You got to tell people that they have to be six feet apart, you have to have people in masks, and you have to have this and that." And my wife was like, I was like, "Oh, boy." She's like, "No, they're all adults." At this time, we've asked the city, we've asked the state, we've got the, and then they're like, "We'll get in trouble." The police led the parade. I mean, it was So then, it went even farther. We had Homeland Security call our city of Yale over it. Now we're getting over, I'm like, "Oh, you kidding me?" As I'm in Marlette, driving by the band playing in a parade. So that's what happened with Dr. Merkentot at that time. Here's what I encourage you all, to please think well. I'm finding people are not thinking right. That's why I gave you a video, a Stanley Milgram. It's a Yale University experiment they did. It's a great video. I went to college many years. I'm a chiropractor. I took many philosophy classes, even at SE4, and it is amazing what you can do with people's minds. And you guys know it, some of you. It's amazing. If you watch that video, and you watch the extras in that video, it's exactly what I experienced in college, and I can't believe, they can make you think that that is black. And they can do it, and they can do it, and they can do it, through fear. That video explained that. He's a wonderful doctor that passed away many years ago, and that study's from the University of Yale. Please watch the video I gave you. So I asked you this, and I will finish with this. It is, I should say this, if we're looking for a solution, which we're not, I have talked to the Amish community, and they are wonderful. They smile. Anybody in the hospital? Nope. Anybody? Nope. You guys social distancing? Nope. You guys masking? Nope. I love the Amish. They smiled. It's like amazing. I'm at the Naval Academy with my son, someone on the sidewalk stops, asks his directions, and I said, "Well, we're from Yale, and it's over there." He's like, "You're from, you know, well, the thumb of Michigan." He steps back and says, "That's where the super-spreader is." I'm like, "It was crazy." I'm like, "How do you know? Oh, it's in the page, it's in the news, it's in this, up in the thumb of Michigan. That's where it's so bad." His wife's like, "Why do you say this?" He says, "Well, it's in the news." And I think, "Well, that's exactly where we're from." So it just goes to show you what this, it isn't like that. So it's our job, this is what I'll, it is our job, and your job, and my job, which I should think of the school board, you fight for those who can't fight. You fight for the kids. You fight for the elderly. You don't let them put people in the metal lab. I mean, you don't do that. If you're fighting to deny that, you do that, but that was wrong.
About 20 seconds.
I would tell you, thank you. I would tell you, I mean, this is one thing, I've talked to many doctors, many doctors.
Hold on just a second. Who yielded the time?
Lisa Murphy.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have talked to many doctors through this time. So when they say, "Talk to the experts," I have. And if you only knew what they were saying. I've talked to OSHA. I've talked to state police troops, gave me great advice. I've talked to, the things that are being said, I hate the people, I talked to the guy who gets the COVID bodies and takes them in. They've done thousands. Do you know how many other diagnosed this year with influenza? One. One body out of the whole year, he said, "This is an all-time record, Doc. He says, "This is crazy. My boss is saying, 'This is crazy.'" Yeah, the crematoriums are backed up in Mount Clemens because they got to test all the bodies, he says. It isn't that. He came in, he had all the suit on, did the mask, did it all. Now he says, "Here's the toe tag. Let me in with nothing, or you, I'm walking away. You can keep the body." Because he's done being played. The stories he has and the people that I have talked to in my life across the country have helped me to think clearly and not be fearful. Well, you have to fight for the kids, and you have to fight for the elderly. The kids should not be in masks. That's crazy there. That's just absolutely lunacy. Hopefully, that video would help you. Okay, this is a time we have to stand against malevolence. I mean, from Gretchen Whitmer, Dana Nelson, Elizabeth Hertel, was it Robert Gordon split? Now we got Dr. Merkentot. That's kind of how the line goes down. They're hiding behind falsehoods. That's what it is. You're hiding behind falsehoods. I will say this, because I don't want to take any more else's time. In America, America has justice for the poor, for the rich, for the kids, for the old, for the young, but it takes time for justice in America sometimes, and I think that's where we are, and I hope justice prevails. I swear, I hope it prevails. There's a poster in my office, I'll finish with this. There's a poster in my office. When men are strong, times are good. When times are good, men are weak. When men are weak, times are hard. May God bless this country, and have mercy on us.
Thank you for letting us come and speak again, and I just want to say a few things about this resolution. I'm glad that that got put on your agenda, because I'm hoping that there can be a change now, that this order was rescinded, even though it was only because of the funding. I still hope that we can maybe move forward in St. Clair County. You know, I go to different places, and I see a lack of workers, like, at restaurants, you have to, you can't go inside. So I hope that we can look and see, why is that happening in our county? Instead of going backwards, let's find a solution. Is it because we don't have workers because there's so many restrictions on them, that they have to wear a mask, or they have to require to get a vaccine? Are we losing nurses because they have to get a vaccine, and that makes our hospitals overrun? So I'm just hoping that we can move forward in St. Clair County now that this is rescinded, and maybe let's find some solutions, even if it's, how can we get our kids to be healthier as far as, you know, giving them vitamins, giving them things that will help them improve their immune systems rather than masking them and restricting their breathing? So I just am hoping that we can see some new direction in St. Clair County and be the example, maybe for our state, of moving forward and seeing something great for our kids here in St. Clair County and our citizens.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to point out a few things that I have noticed. There was a video of you doing a small interview on Facebook with Trey Smith, and the entire time, you were pulling your mask down with your hands and holding it down. What was the point of wearing the mask in the first place? I look around, and I see the people in masks, and they're touching it with their hands. And I know one thing, when you have fear, that affects your health. Fear will kill you. Please, I beg you to take that gum out of your mouth. You're chomping on it. It's, it's bad. I'm sorry. I also wanted to point out that I had spoken to her a few months ago on the phone, and I had told her that a parent at a board meeting did a carbon dioxide detector with the mask, and it went through the roof. I think it was four times above than the normal. And when I told her that on the phone, first of all, she didn't know what a carbon dioxide detector was. It took her a while to figure it out. And then she played, "Well, what are we supposed to do? Have the children kill Grandma? Now the kids are murderers? This is what we're putting in the children's heads? That they're murderers? What is going on? This is ridiculous." I also want to say, white pine needle tea is excellent for you. It's got sermon in it. So if you sip on that, too, that'll help you out. And I also like to remind the board of the U.S. Code 18, Title 18, 1001.
Both the Declaration of Independence and the Michigan Constitution have a lot to say to us. It specifies that our rights and freedoms are given to us by God, not man. If man doesn't give them to us, they cannot be taken away by man. Number two, government was instituted to protect our God-given rights, not to tell us what our rights and freedoms are. Number three, the people are the sovereign. And number four, elected officials are elected to uphold the Constitution, protect the rights of the people, and represent them. We did have a win with the Michigan Legislature tying the Health Department mandates with the budget. So at this time, the MDHHS and the local health departments can no longer make their unconstitutional mandates. Many legislators have been trying to represent their oath of office in representing the people and the Constitution, but many of their proposed bills have been vetoed. This important one was passed. Commissioner Rushing made a bold move at the last meeting, representing the Constitution and the rights of the people, in trying to put some limits on an unelected official, Dr. Merkentot. With that step, there has been considerable noise in the local media. I think there is a real problem with this. What people are not understanding is that it has nothing to do with whether you agree or disagree with Dr. Merkentot. Constitutionally, an unelected official does not have the power to make laws and mandates to try to enforce their own objectives. The legislator, legislative body, is the one that is to make the laws. This is to protect us from tyranny. We, the people, can take just one deep breath. These directives tied to the Health Department budget will end with the next budget cycle. And I'm sure there will be some movement in the court system in the meantime. We all have to remain vigilant. But we, the people, do have options. I have with me tonight the Unlock Michigan petitions for initiation of legislation to amend the public health code to restrict the MDHHS and local health departments to emergency orders of 28 days only. Then any extensions must be approved by the legislature. This will put an end to the never-ending, unconstitutional, and evil control of power exhibited by these agencies. I have the petition, so if anybody wants to sign and make a difference, they can tonight.
Susan Lester?
Good evening, members of the board. Even though I have plenty to say about COVID-19 and the insanity that is happening in our country right now, I respectfully come before this board to speak about the disconcerting actions of the Medical Health Director, Dr. Merkentot, to that of which I have three points. First, for a year and a half, we've been mandated to wear a mask in order to protect others. At the Board of Commissioners meeting last month, Dr. Merkentot sat in her chair in the front row for over an hour, listening to people speak while wearing her mask. Then she stood up in front of this room filled with 200 people and took off her mask so she could present her slides to you. So Dr. Merkentot must either not care about protecting others, or she understands that masks don't work to prevent virus spread and her mask-wearing was for political theater. Two, repeated questions to the St. Clair County Public Health Department and questions directly to Dr. Merkentot about COVID-19 cases in St. Clair County have gone unanswered. This can only lead us to believe that there is something they are trying to hide. The complete lack of transparency from our county's public health officials is absolutely unacceptable. Third, and finally, Dr. Merkentot's recent public health order, albeit now rescinded due to the risk of loss of funding, her order to quarantine only unvaccinated children despite knowing there are countless cases of vaccinated people getting infected with COVID-19, which means vaccinated people can and will spread COVID-19. But since Dr. Merkentot's order only quarantined unvaccinated children and threatened to detain non-compliant children, can only lead me to believe that her reasons were strictly to punish unvaccinated children and their parents, or she doesn't understand the science or how communicable diseases are spread. Either way, whether it was to be punitive or due to her lack of knowledge, both reasons are extremely egregious. And someone like that should not be in the position of power to oversee the health and well-being of the people who reside in St. Clair County.
About 30 seconds.
We are almost two years in from this and we are much better informed. These malicious, insane mandates and the politicizing of a virus that even with inflated death rates, a virus that 99.6% of adults and 99.998% of children, essentially 100%, will recover from, this needs to stop.
Please, thank you.
So I am here to say to this board, each and every one of you, as one of your constituents, I thoroughly and utterly would support a decision from this board, whether it be tonight or in the future, to remove Dr. Merkentot from her position as a St. Clair County Medical Health Officer, or do not renew her contract. Thank you.
Lauren Martin? Geneva Bivins?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Geneva Bivins. I live in St. Clair County. What I am about to say, I don't say lightly. I don't trust Dr. Merkentot to make decisions in our best interest. I support firing her. Although I have many reasons, my top reasons are for allowing COVID patients to be moved into nursing homes with our most vulnerable and at highest, excuse me, at highest risk of death from contracting illness; for enlisting teenagers and young adults to pressure their friends and family into getting a COVID vaccine. They are not qualified to give medical advice, nor do they have the life experience to understand the weight of the burden put on them by that. Can you imagine how devastated they would be when one of their friends or family members are injured or die from the very vaccine that they helped pressure them into getting? Despite what Dr. M would like everyone to believe, vaccine injuries and deaths are at an all-time high since the rollout of COVID vaccines; for discriminatory mandates to quarantine healthy people; for playing a significant role in exacerbating, exacerbating the mental health crisis during the pandemic by participating in fear campaigns; for convincing others that they should be afraid of healthy people; for not providing adequate data and other necessary information for people to make decisions that are in their, in the best interest of themselves and their families; and for threatening residents and their children. I support the resolution that promotes the general welfare of St. Clair County for all of the reasons stated in the resolution, as well as the speech that I made at this meeting on September 2nd. It is in everyone's best interest to discuss medical treatment with their doctor. People have the right to decline a test or treatment that they don't want and do not need. It is a common sense resolution that does not support making decisions based on fear. I would add to the statement about quarantine, though, that we will not support the quarantine of healthy people. I do believe that if people are sick, they should stay home. I would leave the rest to the resolution as it is. Where there is risk, there must be choice. Thank you.
Eric Bivins?
Hello, everybody. My name is Eric Bivins. I'm very pleased you allowed me to speak to you today and want you all to know that I respect the tough position that you all are in. I know it's not an easy, especially the way everything is politicized right now. I'm come to you as a very concerned citizen. I believe my health department has let me down. I have not been able to make proper decisions based on the information she, they have given us. We have no idea how many people have been hurt from the vaccine. We have no idea why no one ever pushed building your immune system, which should have been pushed immediately. Your immune system has always been our best defense against any virus. And anybody that knows anything about the respiratory system knows that is the major part of it. These masks are literally going to make everybody sick with the flu that everybody's talked of. So obviously, I support cleaning house. The fact that politics has now entered that department shouldn't be possible. Here, maybe. There, never. So I would support it and Godspeed to you guys. Thanks.
Dean Deshaun? Patrick? Oh, this is a good one. Thank you, I appreciate it.
What is your last name? I'm curious now. Munio.
Good job. Right on. I want to start out just by quoting a Dr. Wayne Dyer. "The ultimate ignorance is the rejection of something you know nothing about and refuse to investigate." I feel that's where we're at with this whole thing. I'm not here tonight to see somebody get fired from their job. What I am here is to ask that people do their job properly and thoroughly. The board, I guess we could look at you folks as a bunch of jockeys on a thoroughbred horse. You're responsible to know when to pull back on the reins and when to let it go. And if you don't do that, the owner of that horse is going to let you go. So my thing that I haven't seen yet, there's so much that's unknown about this, why hasn't there been a panel put together of pro and con professionals to sit with a public forum and present all of the issues concerning the COVID, the mask, the vaccine? And let that determine, because you folks are responsible for the people in this county, not who's governing you at the state or on the federal level, it's the people in this county that elected you. And that's who you're accountable to. So the people should have a right to be in on this, ask questions, educate everybody. We can bring in all kinds of doctors, professionals, that would be willing, I know they would be more than willing to sit in on something like that. So I say move forward and do the job properly. And I'm a, I'm a non-mask wearer, but I would never enforce that upon anybody else. I have beliefs that I know are protected by the Constitution for the United States. Anything else that violates those is null and void. But I also respect other people. So, that's, that's all I got to say.
Melissa Cripp?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and members of the board. I didn't come here with a prepared speech, but since my schedule allowed me to be here, I just wanted to come and talk about the effects of quarantine in a healthy kid. My son was quarantined two weeks ago. He's healthy, thank God he didn't come down with the COVID. But it really, it really affected him. He's, he's special ed. So being that he can't be with his teachers, he doesn't learn anything. So therefore, he lost two more weeks of education on top of the two, two years pretty much that they had lost. My daughter, in the sixth grade, is now reading at the fourth grade level. She has always been at or above education level and now she's reading at the fourth grade level? That's, I, I can, I can only think that that's only because she's missed two years of school. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up was we received a nasty letter from the Health Department threatening legal action, criminal action, if we decided to let our son go out of the house. I don't think that's right. I don't think that the Health Department should be threatening the people of St. Clair County with criminal offenses if they let their son or daughter, who are healthy, leave their house. That's just, that's what I wanted to speak on. Thank you.
Virginia Curry?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm a retired nurse and I have a daughter who's a nurse in a COVID unit in a university hospital. And I respectfully ask you, the board, to allow science established by evidence that's been collected by a majority and overwhelming number of agencies and bodies of science in the world to, to consider that and not the politics that seems to have divided our community. The evidence is collected, it's shown that vaccines are safe. Quarantines mitigate the spread of disease and masks prevent the spread of disease. They are all effective. When our hospitals are overwhelmed, like they are in Florida and Texas, the people, the quiet people of this county who quietly go about their business and obey the laws will remember where you stood on this. And I applaud those who have the courage to stand up and do the right thing and follow the science. Thank you.
Abigail Hicks?
Lisa? For everybody in here, if you would, please, I'm hard of hearing and I don't know if everybody's hearing everything that's being said. Please speak closer to the mic because of the mask, I'm really having a tough time listening. Please speak in the mic.
Okay. So maybe this is a little different. If you're wondering why so many of us are so angry, it's because we're not being heard. Our federal government is trying to silence us. Our state government is trying to silence us. And many platforms are trying to silence us. And if you haven't been silenced, it's because you are on the side of the agenda that's being pushed by the other side.
Please don't hit the.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So that's why we're angry, because we have constitutionally the right to speak and the right for our government to address our grievances. And in all of this, what I feel has been lost is that our Constitution, which is so precious and special, that so many have died for and are still dying for, has been cast aside. Many of us don't know the Constitution. We don't know the, the, the United States Constitution or the Michigan, and I was one of them. I was one of those people that was not paying attention and I let people drive who shouldn't be. So now I woke up and I am paying attention and I hope that you also will start paying attention. The world needs people who are going to speak the truth. Dietrich Bonhoeffer in Germany, World War II. He said, "Silence in the face of evil is evil itself. God will not hold us guiltless. Not to speak is to speak and not to act is to act." We need to speak and we need to act on behalf of those who cannot. But when those who listen to him refused to hear him, millions of people died. If you remember what happened, the German people did not listen, that tyranny was at their doorstep in the form of Hitler. And as a result, many, many died that didn't need to. Tyranny is here in America. Wake up, pay attention. Don't be so set in your own little world that's all nice and good. You've got to get the bigger picture here. We're in jeopardy here. We're on the precipice here in the United States and in the world. There are people being hunted down in Australia who are trying to speak out. Are you aware? Do you know what is going on beyond our borders? And do you truly know what's going on here? Because we need people who have courage to stand up and speak out for the truth, for our Constitution and our constitutional rights. We don't need the politicizing of a virus that, okay, doesn't have the teeth that some are trying to tell you it does. So I hope that many of you will do the study that I've done and many in here have done and really look at what our Constitution says, both federally and statewide, and think about the people that you represent. Thank you.
Linda Bartlett? Tracy Berg, Bergy?
My name is Tracy Bergy. I come to you as a mother, a businesswoman, a precinct delegate candidate. We stand here with one voice. And not that we hate or we don't want to see justice, or we don't, we don't see that. But we stand here, I stand here for my children. I have two kids, and there is nothing I wouldn't do for those babies. My story begins about a year and a half ago. My husband came home and he wasn't feeling well. And I was like, oh my gosh. And then they started talking about COVID. My husband, he did, he picked up COVID, he worked, he picked it up. Either that or Meyer, but those are the only places he goes, is work in Meyer. So, but anyway, he picked up COVID, and it was scary because we didn't know then, in March, the end of March 2020, that we know today. And I've got to tell you, for the braveness of this fabulous family doctor that we have in Marysville, he went beyond. Whitmer was threatening to take his license. He gave my husband hydroxychloroquine for five days, 200 milligrams, and a Z-Pak zithromycin for five days. And I have friends that are nurses, so like, that isn't my thing, but I can call my friends who know, right? So we call our friends. And so I did everything, was instructed, I, I, I quarantined him, I did everything they said, I took his blood pressure, I made sure he was good. He'd had a health scare the year before, so I was afraid because he was kind of, you're at-risk people, right? So in two days, less than 48 hours, my husband was asymptomatic. So I mean, and besides prayer, I just think that God is good. We have medicine available here. Hydroxychloroquine has been used in our country for 65 years. I don't know if anybody knew that, but I just thought it would be a fun fact. And so my husband began to get better, and everything was all good. But I feel like fear has, has changed America. If you had told me a year and a half ago, I sit and visit with people all day, that this is what it looked like, I would have said, you guys are crazy. That's, that's never going to be. That is not what we look like. We cannot allow fear to run our lives and intimidate our children and to, and to let them do that. It's horrible. Well, COVID, pardon me. Yet, I'm sorry. Yet Whitmer was threatening to take our doctors' licenses, and that is true. When we picked up his, when I picked up his medicine at Meyer, the pharmacist said to me, oh, and I, I was instructed just to pick it up and not say anything and walk away. And I will forever be grateful for some, you know, heads up. But our kids and this fear mongering, it continues on and on. My children go to a public school. I can't afford a, a, you know, a school that we pay for, but I have always loved our schools. I was raised in a public school. I think it's good. But I do not like that our health director will come in and she mitigates these crazy things for our kids. Our kids, when my kid comes home and I pick her up from school and I say, how was school today? She said, it was prison. And I don't know about you, but my kids are good girls, and I don't expect them to see that side of prison. And I don't think that, but it's so frustrating. Our kids, our kids are struggling, and they are begging for our help. And that's why I'm here, because I'm, I'm not a public speaker. This is not my thing. But I want you to know that as a mother, I would do anything for my kid. I would never send them to school if I thought they were not safe, and especially when we know, we know the stats, we know. But we cannot continue to mask them. So go into the end of May, my youngest daughter has some asthma issues. She was so sick, she had to leave school. I took her into the doctor, and I was like, oh wow. I said, does she have COVID or what do you think? And he told me that she had bacterial pneumonia, and it was coming from these masks that our babies have been put on. Oh yeah, I don't care if you believe me, I don't care. It is my truth, and it is truth. And like, you tell me about science, I'm a mother. I lived through that, and I am not going to be silent anymore. I am not going to allow people who don't know, and these are our children, you all have children, and would you not do anything for your kids? Because I don't care about whether I like someone's science or someone's ideas, no I don't, but I care about my babies. And those are why we're all here, right? Because we all have children, and we just want to protect them, you know? And I just think that there's got to be a better way than letting this woman who tells me she knows science. And I tell you, I think I know more than that. I think that's crazy. And I just think that this, you know, I have never, ever heard that healthy people would be quarantined. Have you all ever heard that? Well, maybe it's new, maybe it's new science, just like our new math. I don't know. But I just, I just want to say, it needs to be different, and it's got to be better for our babies, right?
Kelly, who yielded your time? What's your last name, first initial? Is it a V?
V.
Okay. Just want to make sure I have the right person. Okay. Jennifer Teed.
I'm going to take off my mask. I've had a booster shot, so. My name's Dr. Vic Abato. I'm not a vet, not a physician, but I am a veteran. My wife and I have lived in this community for more than 50 years. I'm here to support Dr. Annette Merkentot and not to support the resolution in question of general welfare. First of all, Dr. Merkentot is doing a great job. She's, she's following Health Department regulations, doing what she's supposed to. She's in a tough position. We should get out of her way of the Health Department and, and let them get on protecting us, especially things like contact tracing, which is how we run down people who are spreading disease. It's been useful in stopping things like meningitis, and we wouldn't want to hamper the Health Department in stopping disease that has killed a lot more people than meningitis did this year. Second of all, there is no constitutional guarantee against nondis, against discrimination against non-vaccine takers or mask, people who weren't wearing masks. There's not, it's not in the Constitution. It's, it's silent on that issue. It's not in the Bill of Rights or the amendments. It's not in the Civil Rights Act. In fact, the opposite is true. We've had a great precedence for excluding people who have not taken, gotten vaccinations. In 1964, when I went to college, I could not get into college without a smallpox vaccination. And I got one. My dad was against vaccinations, but when I, later I went in the Army and they just gave me three at a time, and three at a time, and three at a time. But the other places, other things like polio, we require people to get polio shots to get through, get into school. There's a long precedent for requiring vaccinations. As for the mask and quarantining, I, I think that's moot now. That resolution was taken back. You know, that, that's not in, in force now, now, both from the state and from us. And finally, where is this coming from, this resolution? I saw an identical resolution put forth at Grand Travers County up north, and other counties I think are doing it. It, it, I said that it's coming from a dark, money-funded think tank that is putting it out for everyone to pass. No, it's true, the, the Grand Travers one is just exactly like this.
About 30 seconds, please.
Okay, finally, I would hope that commissioners would back off from this. Why do you want to get involved in something that is just trouble for you and could involve you, involve you in legal problems?
No, Sean.
Oh, I thought you said Dawn Schaefer.
We could. I could go ladies first. No problem there. Commissioners, thank you. So the last few weeks, done a lot of thinking. Actually started an open page to capture each time my direct reports told me no, and every time I told my director no. So far, I have two blank pages. Can all of you say the same? I want to thank Mr. Rushing, Mr. Van Bosh for their leadership and their respect of their oath of office. I'd also like to thank Mr. Dunn, Mr. McConnell, Mr. Bohm for their support of Mr. Rushing's motion to ask the Health Director to rescind the latest PHO. I know this is past news, but there's precedent here. As we all know, the Health Director with the assistance of the county lawyer decided to tell their bosses no. Not even 24 hours had passed from the time of the board vote, and the Director and Lawyer already had their responses ready. That tells me she could care less what any of you think or any respect for the positions on the board. After the vote was published in the Times Herald, we clicked, or quickly learned who does support her: unelected bureaucrats. We've seen that tonight as well. They seem to lead the charge. Taxpayer-funded individuals, as a matter of fact, individuals that we pay for. James Fried, Justin West Miller, superintendents from Port Huron, Marysville School, or Marysville Schools, were all quick to cheerlead for the Director. Again, unelected bureaucrats, taxpayer-funded salaries. Even county contractors like Mr. Fletcher. The next group to toss their support behind the Director, her pals in the upper percentage of the wage earners in the county. Chief Medical Officer for Lake Huron Medical, a local dermatologist, and a local public relations consultant all added their opinions to the Times Herald, to name a few. It's nice to see who our friends are and how they're all tied together. All of them mentioned seem to have nice lucrative contracts with their employers. Now let's fast forward a couple of weeks. The governor and state representatives come to a budget agreement with some boilerplate language that takes money from the Health Director and the Health Departments if they don't follow the new language. $573,000, to quote the Times Herald story from September 30th. It's puzzling to me how the Health Director went from threatening letters of misdemeanors, possible civil court proceedings, snarky comments to any challengers of the PHO, and a complete censorship of the Health Department Facebook page. Corporate counsel's colored commentary has also been chimed in. We welcome, excuse me.
About 20 seconds.
But with just the flip of a switch, the PHO is gone because you might lose some funding. We heard nothing but gloom and doom from the Director, and the only way to save us from COVID was to remove healthy kids from school because they might be infected by the dreaded 15-minute rule. Not at lunch or recess, though. No COVID there. We heard nothing from five of you on the board. Two of you stood strong, doing the hard right over the easy wrong. We heard only the one-sided views of the local paper, if we want to call it that, and those that they chose to interview. No opposition had a voice other than our three minutes of free speech that we get here. Countless emails and phone calls from parents like the ones before you. Those of you that did respond to those emails without, or, excuse me, those of you that did receive those emails without replying might as well use their automatic reply option on your email to state, sorry, I won't be responding to your email. Communication received was quick and dirty. We'll put it on the FAQs on the website. This is not open and honest communication. This is politics. We know what this is all about. It's the money. If we only knew at the beginning of this school year, hundreds of children may not have been emotionally and educated, or educationally stunted by the PHO. Hundreds of families, or hundreds of families would have not have had to make the hard decision, do I stay home with the kids or do I go to work and pay the bills? If I don't stay home, I get to face a misdemeanor charge from the Health Director. If only there was an elected body at the county level that we could have had fight a little harder for the people. Instead of sitting back and letting the order ride without any formal opposition, by your own admissions through county lawyer, you have no authority over the Health Director or the PHO, or the legality of the whole deal, or she doesn't fall under our authority in that respect. So who exactly does the Health Director answer to? For a salary of almost $200,000 taxpayer dollars, I feel we should have the right to know that someone is in charge of her. Is the St. Clair County Health Department the new Tony Fauci? There needs to be accountability, or this will all happen again. We want answers to who are in charge. You all volunteered for this. If this is too much to ask of all of you, there are many of us ready to take your seats.
Kristi Treadaway.
Good evening. I just want to let you know, I too am a health professional, and on the opposite spectrum of the kids, I work with the elderly. I've worked on a COVID wing with COVID patients in full PPE, two masks, a face shield, all of it. We have seen many, many asymptomatic patients. We have seen a few pass that were full of cancer on hospice, but the majority of them did recover. We do testing weekly, and as far as the testing, we have, research has shown that the COVID tests are highly inaccurate. And in fact, on December 31st, they are being pulled because of their inaccuracy, and they are being asked to separate influenza from COVID because where did the influenza go this year? Did COVID magically cure influenza? And as far as contact tracing that this gentleman brought up, I wanted to address to Dr. Merkentot. My son was quarantined this, about two weeks ago. He was near a child who had been tested positive with COVID. And my, my son's cousin sat next to him in class and was sent to quarantine at home. My son was not. I don't know if my son sat near him, I don't have any clue. But five days later, your office called me to tell me my son needed to quarantine. So where is your contact tracing? Because my son was five days infecting your school because he did come down with symptoms on that Sunday night when he was at his dad's, and I kept him home per my own intuition and motherly knowledge to keep my son home when he's sick, not per your office. So when I called your office, your office called me, I asked her where your contact tracing is, why did it take five days for you to call me? Where is your negligence now? Because that was very negligent of your office to not notify me because he was sick and he was making other children sick in the school, I'm certain. And your office personnel said that she would contact her supervisor if I would like to talk to them. I said, I certainly would. Your supervisor never returned a phone call, never returned one. The next call I got was from a gentleman named Deonte on my voicemail, who talked really super fast, and I couldn't understand a word he said. So that's what I have to say about that. Now I've lost my spot.
About 30 seconds, please.
Vaccines. So this gentleman was talking about vaccines and the polio and all that. This is not a vaccine. It has not been approved by the FDA. This is on emergency use authorization only. Yes, it is. If you do your research, the only vaccine that has been approved is Comirnaty. This is Biotech, and it is under emergency use authorization, and it is under emergency use. So Comirnaty has not even been released. It is still has to produce a labeling, it still has to produce testing, it still has to produce ingredients in the insert, which none of the emergency, emergency use authorization shots have. So I mean, as far as vaccines, this is not a vaccine we are currently using. And on top of that, 99% of the patients that come into And on top of that, 99% of the patients that come into my facility with COVID have been vaccinated.
Kevin Watkins?
Hello, county commissioners, and everyone else here. A mask is off because I'm away from you. You're going to kind of forget, they had contests on wearing masks. And it says, "I wear masks for you. You wear masks for me. Keep your droplets to yourself." That's what masks do. It keeps, to test that, wear masks for a few hours, talk and play and scream, and then take it out on the field, and inside, you'll find it pretty wet. But those with droplets, that would be in the environment, that would be coming towards me if you're within six feet or three feet of me. The true number is three feet, but six feet, we're going to tell you that. Because we know you're not going to stay six feet, you're going to come three feet, so we're still safe. I want to mention, first, I wonder how many doctors in the house. People probably didn't know that Dr. Merkentant graduated from Wayne State University, a very, very elite university. They're high up there, number one with the nursing in the state, has been for years. What we have in here is probably a lot of Dr. Bombays. Google him, and you'll know what he's all about. So, that's kind of concerning. Just a little history. People talk about vaccines. Did you know, the patriots in the room, the patriots, that George Washington had his troops vaccinated for smallpox because more of his troops were being killed by the disease than bullets? And where would we be without George Washington? So, know the facts. Also know that there's always a third of people that are against everything, no matter what. They were for slavery. They were against civil rights. The third, of course, they're against vaccines. How many of you guys are taking the flu shot? Coming up, Dr. Merkentant represents the flu shot. You taking it? You know, how many of you guys have taken, your children or you yourselves have taken MMR, DTAP? Polio, okay? You can't come to school.
Please, no talk.
Guess what? You can add to my time for disrupting me, too. Thank you. How many of you are lined up to take the flu shot this year? How many of you had your kids, before they entered school, had the MMR, these different things? You're for that, but you're not for vaccine, for COVID, because it's political. You're talking about, you know, as far as being patriots, okay, but, okay. But we are talking about the big lie and not other things. But the key thing here is that I'm a nurse. You know, I kind of didn't go through a total introduction. But a lot of people know behavior, you don't. You will. One thing I'm going to tell you, Mr. Parliamentarian, or basically Sergeant Arms, you made a huge mistake allowing people to pass their time to others. I'm glad you do that. Please don't cherry pick that. It will be in October 27th. You know, I can be very windy. A lot of people will be here submitting their time to me, so that's fine. Glad you, school districts changed that, other entities changed that because you're meeting to go to the time you need to spend it, like a minute. I've got more than 10 seconds. Thank you. Now I've got three more minutes, okay? And I've got probably three more people out there that got three minutes for me. So, we look at, I think, like I said, believe in science. I guess that's why I mentioned, please Google Dr. Bombay, is that you understand, facts are facts. Those who are, the facts are, those who are dying are the ones that are unvaccinated. It's amazing that how angry people can be. They'd rather die than to stand. But that's fine. You want to stand for something, then die and move on. Because it is proven that the vaccine saves lives. It's proven that wearing masks protects people. Like I stated, I wear masks for you. I've had here. You wear masks for me. It's obvious I care about you, but you don't care about me. And that's the problem we have here for us who say there's so much for people, you know, in this country. You know, I find that very concerning. So, I want to make one point as far as commissioners. You're, I'm thinking of your physicians. I, you know, this is probably not many black and brown people in the room, but we come, like, I'm speaking for 100. Each one was probably speaking for 100 different people now. What we do, we believe in not bum rushing the joint. Come here and express our points. We don't make demands. We give you expectations. But if you choose to go down the wrong road, then we'll come back and we'll make good trouble. In the name, yes. In the name, in the name of the, in the name of the late John Lewis, good trouble. We all know what he's all about. We all know what Martin Luther King's all about. That's good trouble. For those who want to take that negative, they go ahead and take it. For those in this room right now with open carry, shame on you. I need to let you know something right now. This is not the '30s. The '40s or the '50s. You know, we're not scared. So please, you know, don't think you're intimidating people. I'm speaking for those out there that know who I'm talking about. You're not intimidating us. So trust me. So leave that at home. Let's be civil. Let's speak, okay? And show some, and show some respect. But I'm here, and two more things. One thing is that, we're speaking of Dr. Merkentant. But it's not just Dr. Merkentant. It is the position. The position of the Health Department Director. The person who was hired by you that you should not micromanage. You're a businessman. You're a fireman, or whatever you may be doing. But you're not a medical doctor. She was hired to do a job, let her do her job. And I want to mention one thing. I'm going to call out one person on that board. His name is Gary Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher is a very respected person. Everybody in St. Clair County knows him, and other counties also. He is an oak. He is an oak. And I'm so happy that he let you know that. You cannot fire her for her doing her job. Okay? She's doing her job. He let you know that, that whole thing about at-will, the at-will state, you cannot fire people at-will for doing their job. So I appreciate the fact that you listen to him. He's like E.F. Hutton. He spoke, you listened. Thank you, Attorney Fletcher, for what you've done for this board. And I hope, again, that you will listen. And thank you very much for allowing the three minutes and us to pass our time because the next meeting, October 27th, bring a pillow and a sleeping bag if you make the wrong decisions. Thank you.
I got to take a bathroom break, so give me.
We're going to adjourn for three minutes. It was Kevin Totty.
No. How you doing, sir? Yes, sir?
I don't know what her system.
Oh, it's going to be a long one today.
Oh, I don't either. Was this a new one that you just got? Are those people who gave up their time?
I'm not against. I'm not against. I was against Dr. Merkentant, Gary Fletcher. And I believe it was a violation of constitutional rights.
If six months in jail, please, if six months in jail.
Hello, Jackie? Very good. Now, the resolution, the resolution we got, we have numerous of them.
Gypsy Moore.
Well, we have numerous of them.
And you know, they're doing a study.
And then what we're going to do is have Gary Fletcher
You get in on this.
Take a look at it. And then we're going to draft one potentially, you know, I'll make the motion later, at 7:00 B. To draft a resolution with similar things in it, maybe some things different, but personally crafted for St. Clair County. We are not voting on this one tonight. And we shouldn't. It came from one of the residents, but then we got three other ones. One from Huron County, one from Traverse City. And that's what we normally do.
All right, let's go.
That won't happen tonight. I mean.
Okay, we're going to get started again.
Next up for public comment is Deb Johnson.
Well, you know, my name is Deb Johnson. I'm the Director of St. Clair County Community Mental Health, and I am speaking today on behalf of our Board of Directors in support of the St. Clair County Health Department and its Medical Health Officer, Dr. Annette Merkentant. And I guess one thing I just wanted to say off script is, being in this room for the last hour and a half has been incredibly sad and disheartening. Everybody is entitled to their own opinion, but the level of disrespect when people are voicing opinions different than yours is sad. It's very sad. St. Clair County is extremely fortunate to have a medical doctor as its public health officer. Her experience, passion, and knowledge concerning the healthcare needs of county residents is invaluable. Before COVID-19, her decisions were always guided by the best science available, motivated by a desire to protect the health of everyone in our county. Her response during COVID-19 has been no different. She is not motivated by political or personal motives, but instead bases her decisions on the best available science and a desire to safeguard the health of all St. Clair County residents. During the past 19 months, Dr. Merkentant and her team have provided an enormous amount of COVID-related support to our community through their educational efforts, which included constant updates via local media, the Health Department website, and Facebook. Even more, she and her team always responded in a timely manner to unique situations, answering critical questions posed by area organizations and businesses. For us at CMH, this meant advising us on situations not only involving our direct employees, but also our provider agencies, particularly on how to protect some of the most vulnerable citizens residing in a variety of settings, like group homes, foster care homes, nursing homes, assisted living. She also assisted in helping us be prioritized in obtaining PPE vaccines for our staff and the people that we serve, and assisted us in hosting several vaccine clinics onsite at CMH, for which we recognized the entire team at the Health Department under her leadership as the CMH Community Service Organization of the Year in May 2021. CMH is not alone in recognizing Dr. Merkentant's value to our community and her passion for the health and well-being of all county residents. For example, in 2019, the United Way recognized her as the Volunteer of the Year. In 2020, the CSCB recognized her and Justin West Miller as the 2020 recipients of the Community Collaboration Award for all their efforts at leading us through this pandemic. And just this year, Dr. Merkentant was the co-recipient of the Dr. Basam Nasser Distinguished Community Champion Award. I'm sure there's others that I don't know of.
About 20 seconds, please.
Thank you. There has been some criticism that the mask mandates and quarantines have negatively affected the mental health of both children and adults. We all know that the rates of anxiety and depression would go up during COVID-19. And to be proactive, St. Clair County CMH, with the support and cooperation of Dr. Merkentant and her team, created a COVID-19 support line available by phone, text, and email. We also expanded services and outreach to the schools. Regarding the issue of encouraging mask use among schoolchildren, there are two issues. The first is whether masks are effective means, are effective as a means of preventing transmission, and the other is whether wearing masks encourages the development of mental health issues among children. Regarding the first issue, masks are effective means of preventing transmission. They are clearly in a school setting. So, the data shows that in settings where there was very high mask use in school, transmission of the coronavirus was less than 1%. Also, children under the age of 12 are currently not eligible for the COVID vaccine. However, they can and do spread COVID-19 virus, even when they do not have symptoms. So, once infected, children can transmit to others. So regarding the second issue, wearing masks encourages the development of mental health issues among children. Well, it is, while it is possible that it could contribute... Sorry. It's possible that it could contribute to depression or anxiety for some children. There is simply no clinical or data-driven evidence to support this contention. Dramatic narratives, no matter how compelling or how much they evoke our sympathy, should not drive healthcare policies. Good science, clinical results, and data-driven studies should. Both St. Clair County CMH and Dr. Merkentant and the Health Department recognize that children have experienced increased anxiety and depression at elevated rates throughout this pandemic, and we have taken a number of steps to address this. However, to say that these increases are the direct result of mask mandates without any evidence whatsoever is not reasonable or responsible conclusion. For these reasons, it is my enthusiastic recommendation that the county commissioners not only retain, but support Dr. Annette Merkentant as a St. Clair County Health Department Medical Officer. Thank you for your time. I just had one last thing to add. Like whoever was thumping throughout my presentation, that's what I'm talking about, the disrespect. It's just not nice.
Helen Hermes?
Helen Hermes.
She's coming.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw you out there.
My name is Helen Hermes.
Helen, could you please put the mic closer to the.
Sure. How's this? Okay. My name's Helen Hermes. And I do not thank anyone for being allowed to speak because it is my right. So, I do respect the board. I know what it's like to be on that side, and now I'm on this side temporarily. A respective study done in Spain was published in January. The entire medical community and the lockdown nanny state tyrants have all ignored it. In March and April of 2020, two nursing homes in Toledo, Spain, were infected with COVID. Every sick and elderly patient and half of the staff working in those nursing homes caught it. Those two nursing homes had 84 patients. The age was 85, with half of the patients over the age of 80. All of them had serious comorbidities. None of them died or went to the hospital. This was nine full months before vaccines were developed. At the first sign of sniffles, they described antihistamines, specifically Zyrtec and Claritin. The rest of the treatment included 500-milligram doses of Z-Pak, Tylenol for pain or fever, nasal washing and gargling with baking soda and salt. That was all that was required for about 75% of the patients. And the 25% where symptoms worsened, they added an asthma inhaler dosed with MEPIFTIN, a two-week course of Levuquin. In the extreme cases or troubled breathing, couple shots of Prednisone every day until breathing returned normal. Staffers working in close proximity to the COVID patients were given Claritin or Zyrtec.
About 20 seconds, Helen.
What is her name? Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Conclusion, all patients evolved satisfactorily beginning of June. End of June, 100% of residents and almost half of the workers had a positive seratology. That's to do with the immune system. Think of the destruction done to families and businesses because of the unnecessary, illegal lockdowns. Emergency use authorization of an experimental vaccine is not allowed under FDA rules. There, if there are other effective treatments available, and you've heard people talk about them here tonight. and you've heard people talk about them here tonight. This report, published in Spain January 21, and not one single medical official or politician has mentioned it. The same corrupt people are still insisting that everyone must be vaccinated multiple times. Why? Money, power, and to promote the destruction of our republic.[627.41][627.41](APPLAUSE) The full report was published in the... Get this: Full Report Published in the National Institute of Health of the United States. You know Fauci's throne, right? Now, I'm going to give this to the Secretary because it has a website, and if you want, if you read the whole thing, you can do so. If you call in and get it, or maybe they'll publish it on the website, I don't know. But you can get the whole thing about this report.[670.25][670.25](APPLAUSE)
Rochelle Bonelli?
Good evening, everybody. You can hear me, right?
(Coughing)
So, I'm not a doctor or a lawyer, or, you know, I'm just a regular person, and I guess now I'm not one of the not-so-silent majority who really do support the Health Department. You know, I think we all look to experts. Today, I had to go to a doctor myself to get a medical opinion. We look to lawyers. We look to plumbers for plumbing expertise, builders for building expertise. I think that we should trust the consensus of what most doctors and most researchers agree. There's not going to be 100% understanding about something that is so new. There's nothing is 100% in anything we do in this world, right? Especially with medicine. Nothing is 100%. But I think if we can go to the CDC and look for guidance, we're going to be generally in the right place, right? You can find studies that will support anything. I mean, I can't tell you how many people, you know, believe in this diet fed or that diet fed, and, you know, you can get a study or some doctor to stand up, some lone person to say anything. But I think when you go to what the majority think is the way to go, understanding that there's not certainty, and I understand people's frustration, because every week there seems to be a different recommendation. I mean, because we're in uncharted territory. So, I feel I am not fearful. I'm careful. I mean, I had a 92-year-old mother that I could not see because of quarantine restrictions. Now, that was not easy. I have very dear friends who had children in their family, grandchildren, who went to, you know, elementary school and brought home COVID unsuspectantly to infirmed grandparents. I wear a mask not for myself, it's for others. I didn't want to bring... When I went to the nursing home last week to see my mom, I didn't want to bring it to her. I could carry it. I have vaccine, but I could carry it. What happened to common decency and our norms? You know, we have been having laws that govern the way we control safety in our country for a long time. We're not driving on the left side of the street or pouring toxins down in our drinking water, our public drinking supply, or putting sewage out into our streets. We have public health and safety laws. We have to have that. We live in a country together. We're not the enemy of each other.
About 20 seconds.
COVID is the enemy. I think we need to use the tools that we have to defeat COVID as fast as we can because it does stink. We all want to get back to the way we were before. It's never going to be the same, but we need to use the tools that we have and be just common sense to do the best job to get through this COVID. And I really... I trust that you will, you know, do the right thing and follow the expertise of our Health
Alfonso Amos?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. I'm here today because what is at stake and what's been at question is, is these mandates and orders constitutional? And I've had the opportunity to work over the last... Wow, it seems like forever now, over the last year and a half with Dr. Mergantant, really focusing on educating the community. We've had forums where we invited not only Dr. Mergantant, but other health professionals that even oppose the mandates. We didn't see half of these people in this room. And so, when we talk about, is this constitutional? I think the question at hand is, I think you all are in the wrong room, and you all should be in Lansing. Because, according to the Michigan State Constitution, Public Health Code Act 368 of 1978, 3332433, Local Health Department Powers and Duties Generally in Section 2433, "A local health department shall continually and dignitarily endeavor to prevent diseases, prolong life, and promote the public health through organized programs, including prevention and control of environmental health hazards, prevention and control of diseases, prevention and control of health problems of particularly vulnerable populations and groups." So, we're here today to fight her over her duties of her job. How many of you have been in a job where people did not like what you did, or how you responded, or how you acted? I know I have. And so, we're all not going to agree with any of the mandates. I hear you. I hear you're frustrated. I hear our kids are frustrated. I'm frustrated. The young lady that was up here before me said it. She couldn't see her mom. I get concerned when my kids go to school and have... My daughter has a pre-existing condition, not knowing if she's going to pick up COVID. That's frustrating. But what's at hand is the integrity, the character, and the work of Dr. Annette Mergantant, who has tirelessly... I mean, I've been up at 7:00 in the morning on the phone calls, in webinars with her, making sure that she did everything she could possibly do in her power to ensure the safety of not just the majority or the minority, but all of us. She doesn't... Nobody knows everything. If you go in your job and you think you know it all, then you are sadly mistaken. She may not get it 100% right.
About 20 seconds.
But...
Are you okay?
Thank you. But I can honestly say to you all that this woman has without a doubt cried tears for the residents of this county. This woman has without a doubt made sure that she was up answering phone calls. I'm telling you, there was times where I sat in meetings and people, they ripped into her. And they ripped into her. And they ripped into her. And they ripped into her. She stood... She sat there with dignity and respect. She honored everyone's voice. She didn't say anything negative about them, and she walked with her head high, believing that what she was doing was the best for all of us, every last one of us. And that's what I'm here to fight for today, is that we all may not agree because there's nothing we're going to agree on 100%, nothing. But to get everybody out here over something, looking at protecting the health and welfare of all, I wish we can get out here like this to talk about making sure our residents have a living wage. I wish we can get out here to talk about this to make sure we have affordable housing in this county. I wish we can get out here to talk about this to make sure that our kids have direct access to great-paying jobs. Really, we should all be ashamed of ourselves for even dragging this out this long, to be in this space for hours on hours on end. We all could have been at home doing a craft with our kids. We could have been sitting feeding our kids. Everybody's talking about their kids. Well, where are you, President, and your kids? You're here at this meeting trying to get somebody fired![1167.33][1167.33](APPLAUSE) Fired for trying to protect your kids. She may not get it right. We don't know yet. We don't know the results. We won't know for years from now. But what I do know is her character is at question, and that I don't like because she's been here standing and fighting and answering questions and making sure she did forums. She's on Facebook. I don't see half of these folks up here on social media talking to you.
You don't see half of them.
I don't see any of them. But I've seen her out there fighting for you. I've seen her producing newsletters so that you got the data. If you don't want to believe the data, that's on you. She produced it. And so, just because, oh, those numbers are false, this is that, that doesn't mean she's not doing her job right. It just means we all have a difference of opinion, and I honor people's differences of opinion. I think that's what makes us America, that we can all think differently, that we can all collectively come together and say, I agree on this, or I disagree on that. But when we try to silence somebody by pushing them out of a job, isn't that unconstitutional in itself? Isn't that sign of saying she's not... She can't say what she's supposed to do?[1237.21][1237.21](APPLAUSE) That's not... That's not correct. And again, I got 15 seconds. I want to say, take this fight down to Lansing. Try to get your Constitution amended because the Michigan State Constitution is written. You all say you stand for the Constitution. That's what I stand by, by the Constitution. It says that she's in her rightful duty.[1256.42][1256.42](APPLAUSE)
Shelley Tinsley? Carol Seaver?
My name is Carol Seaver. I hope you can hear me. We struggled to hear people all night, didn't we? I want to thank County Commissioners Dave Rushing and Dave Vandenbosch for all their hard work and research, and for standing up for the freedoms and the rights of the people of this county.[1314.75][1314.75](APPLAUSE) Okay. This is the story of my family and the fiasco that happened with the Health Department. My family is a missionary family, and they were returning overseas where they work and live, okay? My daughter is telling this. It's her words. "Family due to depart Detroit Metro, August 19th, had to be tested within 72 hours of departure. August 17th, family of six tested at St. Clair County Health Department. Five negatives, one positive. Number two, son. Son had no symptoms, no contact with anyone who had COVID. August 18th, number two, son was retested, two tests. First, a rapid antigen test, then a PCR at Roseville Urgent Care. Both negative." Okay. "St. Clair County Health Department put us on the no-fly list anyway. Three flights back and forth for six people, okay? Not allowed to fly, even when we had proof of a negative test in our hands at the airport." Delta said, "It's the CDC's decision." Called the CDC in Georgia, and they said, "It's your local Health Department's decision." Met with reps of CDC at airport, they said we would be unable to fly for a minimum of two weeks, and then only allowed if the local Health Department took us off the no-fly list. Many phone calls later, Lansing Health Department, Georgia CDC, St. Clair County Health Department, all said St. Clair County Health needed to rescind the no-fly listing because they initiated it. They refused with no explanation why Roseville Urgent Care tested son negative twice. They said that Roseville probably didn't calibrate their machines correctly, and that it was impossible for there to be a false positive. That false positives never happen. Side note, this is bizarre since just recently, two hosts walked off the view TV show on air because they tested positive. Then the next day, they were told those were false positives. It's all over the news, folks. This is me speaking now. Incidentally, a nurse said that St. Clair County Health Department has a reputation for false positives.
Carol, could you finish up, please?
Okay. "There was extreme stress for our family. Daughter had to rebook airfares, tickets within seven hours of refusal to board in order to get qualified tickets with the airline. But St. Clair County Health gave them conflicting dates when they would be eligible to fly. What to do? St. Clair County Health was closed over Labor Day weekend, but the tickets were for the day after Labor Day, okay? They had to be... They had to be retested 72 hours before they flew." Okay. Did you give me three more minutes?
Yeah.
Thank you. I just need one more. "They finally found another clinic open during Labor Day, an hour and a half away, so they drove there. It cost them $2,200 to change the tickets." We're talking about a missionary family, okay? "Health Department called and checked up on us. Have you been isolating your son? Have you been to the grocery store? To church? We felt like criminals. Eight people in one house, two of them older. None of us had any symptoms, and no one ever got sick. Nineteen days later, they were allowed to fly out." This is government overreach to control the people, a real power play.[1550.42][1550.42](APPLAUSE)
Cindy Conant?
I feel like I'm Mary Powell.
So, Mary Powell.
First, I'm going to say I do a lot of research, and people who know me know this. Quarantines were designed a long time ago, back in the plague, and it was meant to slow the spread of a virus or disease when there is not a therapeutic, a vaccine, or cure. And last time I checked, we have those. So, I thought long and hard about what I was going to say tonight, and it was tough. Times have been crazy over the last 19 months. They've been uncertain, sad, frustrating, mentally draining. But over the last 19 months, it's been educational and informative. Personally, after 19 months, we as a society, as a whole, should know how to handle an endemic called the coronavirus that has been around for decades. While I thank all of our local Health Departments for their ongoing updates and recommendations, the mandates need to stop. I know there isn't any right now, but we all know how that's going to go. I personally have relied on the local Health Department for birth control, vaccines, health questions, WIC, and so much more. I've utilized them for hearing and vision screening for all of my kids, just to name a few. And I'll continue to look at them for recommendation and updates. But people need to start talking to their primary care physicians, especially about stuff as an mRNA shot, along with other health choices. Now, here's the shocker. Are you ready? I spoke to my doctor. I have a blood clotting disorder that is rare. She said, "Do not get the mRNA shot." Did I listen? No, I didn't. But boy, I really do wish I had. While it's nobody's business if I got it or not, I want to explain why I did and why I regret it. I didn't think I had a choice. With our current administration threatening jobs and employers of being fined, or even people being turned away from receiving medical treatments, as somebody with medical problems already, I felt I had no other choice. And with the threat of being detained if I didn't follow a quarantine order, I couldn't risk it. Who here can honestly say that they can afford to be off work for two weeks over a possible exposure? Not me. We'd go bankrupt. Even though I'm vaccinated, I can still catch, carry, and transmit it, but I regret it 100%. The side effects that I have had since the second dose is unbearable, unreal, and I do not wish these upon my worst enemies. Some of you may ask why, but again, I made the choice. Something as an American, I have a choice. Now, I can tell you for damn sure, because of my side effects, my kids will not be getting this mRNA shot. I feel, when you mandate something, especially after 19 months of them, you are taking away from personal health choice. While I know my five-year-old has more common sense than some people in this county, I feel that it's good for our Health Department to continue making recommendations, just that, recommendations. Like any virus prior, best practices are handwashing, covering when sneezing and coughing, and as my five-year-old would say, stay out of people's bubbles. If you don't feel well, stay home. In our house, we have a golden rule. If you don't feel good, we watch you for 24 hours. If no fever develops and it's just the sniffles, it's probably just the... If no fever develops, and it's just the sniffles, it's probably just the allergies. But if there is a fever, they are home until they are fever-free and med-free for 24 hours. We do this not only for our health, but our community. I truly feel that if after 19 months, it is time to get back to living, time to celebrate the holidays and birthdays with our loved ones. It is time for kids to be in school unless they're sick and allowed to be kids, or it is time to go and enjoy a football game on a Friday night mass free cheering on your local team. Life is too short, and after 19 months, we need to get back to focusing to life, mental health, and happiness. So please, talk to your doctors and make those personal choices between you and your doctor. Stop trying to mandate everything. It just gets everybody riled up. And most importantly, please, live your life to the fullest, because it's so short, and we've buried so many over the last 19 months, and not all of them were from COVID. So please, spend time with your loved ones and get back to living your life. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to support Dr. Annette Merkattan and the St. Clair County Health Department. Per state law, Michigan Public Health Act of 1978, county health departments are given great latitude in keeping communities in Michigan safe. Though I have not served in an elected capacity, I have served on numerous organized boards, and the County Board of Commissioners is charged with performing the same duties that many nonprofit boards are charged with. And your primary duty, as I'm sure you all know, is being financial fiduciaries of the county budget. While you all bring unique talents to the board, the County Board of Commissioners is really not charged with micromanaging the policy in any department. You don't decide what time the lighthouse can be climbed or whatnot. That's up to the Parks and Rec Department, for example. But most particularly, not the county health department, which operates under a separate county health board. I encourage you to step back and allow Dr. Merkattan and her staff to do their jobs. Do you have any idea, really, I'm assuming that you do, of the countless hours that all of them have worked, the entire staff, to help save lives and keep our community safe over the last year and a half? What an insult it must be to Dr. Merkattan and to all of her staff that despite their years of education and training, members of the county board, none of whom, I don't believe any of you are actual medical professionals, are working so hard to micromanage their jobs and walk them into a corner with their hands tied by asking them to rescind mandates that they have put in place for the county public health, and you are asking them to stop making decisions that are the good for the health of everyone in the community? Or, maybe I'm wrong, did I miss your medical school graduation? With all due respect to each of you, I implore of you to stand down and allow our county health department to do the work it is charged with doing, keeping you and your constituents safe from harm and illness, and quite frankly, safe from themselves. I encourage each of you to choose good public health policy over party. Public health is not a partisan issue. Thank you.
Hi. I'm here tonight also in support of our county health director, Dr. Merkattan, and for all the employees and volunteers of St. Clair County Health Department that have worked tirelessly and under great pressure during this public health emergency. For 16 years, I was a commissioner, county commissioner, and during most of that time, I also sat on the Board of Health. I know that the people within the health department have one goal in mind, to protect the health and safety of our community. I commend and thank Dr. Merkattan and her staff for their efforts in keeping our citizens informed with weekly webcasts, the COVID-19 dashboard, and truly an open-door policy for distributing information. When the vaccines became available on very short lead time, the department set up clinics and developed a plan for getting shots in arms. The outreach and coordination of a mass vaccination effort is no easy task, especially when the timetable is short to stop the spread of what can be a deadly disease. I have to say, I was completely caught off guard when I saw that the county board voted to overrule the county health director's recommendation and order. Somehow, this department formed under state law and statute was being undermined and carrying out what is their main statutory requirement, quote, "to continually and diligently seek to prevent disease, prolong life, and promote public health through specific," and "through organized programs directed at environmental health hazards, specific diseases, and especially vulnerable population groups." I'm appealing to you tonight. Please do not undermine the work of dedicated officials who have no agenda but to keep St. Clair County citizens safe. You know, all, there was a lot of talk tonight about freedom and the Constitution and all that, which I am very well familiar. In fact, I don't have my purse up here, but I carry a little Constitution with me all the time, because something as an elected official for as many years as I was, it was something that I was very dedicated to and swore to uphold. So I'm aware of it. But we cannot have a free society without some rules. There are rules. And these rules are put in place to protect us and to keep order. Without those rules, it's anarchy. And I don't think that's the choice that we want to make. I believe most citizens in our county agree, agree that a good job is being done by our health department. So please follow the science, and let's trust, trust our experts.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I do appreciate the zeal in the room today, both for and against the issues that are on our agendas and on our minds, so thank you for that. I will start off by saying that my name is Jim Kasky. I'm a community pharmacist, and as many of you know, pharmacists are the most trusted profession in the United States, at least currently we are. And also, I serve as a vaccinator, and I pride myself in medication therapy management. I do have no financial interests to the health department at all, or to the medical societies in our, in our county. However, I do serve as the president of the St. Clair County Pharmacists Association and president of the Blue Water Immunization Partnership. I also serve with the Emergency Management Group of St. Clair County. Those are things that I am very proud of. I have found it difficult to trust the media. However, I have served as a frontline professional, as a pharmacist, for nearly 50 years, and have seen a sharp contrast between those that have been diligent in caring for their health and those that do not. So for the individual that spoke about supplements earlier, I'm a strong advocate for that. So I say kudos to you. Individuals I have found that receive vaccinations, for example, the traditional influenza vaccine, pneumonia, HPV, shingles, et cetera, et cetera, I have found that they did not experience severe adverse health outcomes later on. Now, for example, those that received the flu shots from me, personally standing behind that counter as a frontliner, that received that immunization in August, September, and October, did not come in during peak flu seasons in January, February, and March with a handful of prescriptions, including antibiotics, antivirals, corticosteroids, cough syrups, or a need to go to the hospital or worse, experienced death. I have worked side by side with Dr. Annette Merkattan and others in the St. Clair County Health Department since 2006.
Please finish up.
Our objective, can somebody yield or not? Our objective has always been to put front and center the health and welfare of our citizens. I speak very highly and positively of Dr. Merkattan and thank her for her wonderful, tireless service.
I am Cheryl, a healthcare worker. Work one-on-one with COVID patients. I'm a healthcare worker, worked one-on-one with COVID people. Before I start, I was asked to read Senate Bill 0082, Section 250, "The Director or a Local Health Officer Shall Not Issue or Enforce Any Orders or Other Directives That Require an Individual in This State Who Is Under the Age of 18 to Wear a Mask or Face Covering." I just have a few bullet points here. The person who commented that it was sad to hear people snickering, sometimes the truth is sad. I've lived through it. I got COVID myself. It was the flu. I was put off of work, and I was not paid for it. I was a hero, now I'm a zero. I'm not going to have a job because I have antibodies which are robust and lifetime. Ridiculous. When they say follow the science, sometimes you have to consider the source. What science? Where are you getting it from? I'm a healthcare worker. I have a degree. I know how to research. There's a lot of cognitive dissonance going on. Just because you believe what you believe doesn't make it true. A lie told 100 times is still a lie. Has the COVID-19 so-called virus ever been isolated? There is no research isolating this. I worked with a 102-year-old that came to my facility because she fell. She got a positive test. She had no symptoms. She's in quarantine for two weeks. She said, honey, I gotta leave. I'm 102. I might die here because I'm old. I'm not sick. She wasn't sick. I have 100 of these stories. The discrimination, the overreach, it's not just in the schools, it's the healthcare facilities. I have to get tested twice a week. I'm healthy. I've had COVID. I had antibodies. I'm good to go. The masks, the cloth and the blue masks everyone wearing, the holes are three microns. The virus is one micron. There's no science to support your mask. We're here as a group.
About 20 seconds, please.
Thank you. Because the Constitution is to protect the people from the government overreach. That's why we're here.
There are a couple people who are downstairs who have requested to speak, so I invite you to come up now while we hear the remaining speakers that are in the room.
I'm Carrie Fuller. I can't thank those maskers enough for setting your mask up here. Thank you. That's going to help to keep me safe. I have had COVID. I'm confident that I'm not going to get it from you despite you're setting your mask here, and I have a strong feeling you're up on all your other vaxes, too. I would like to thank you, Commissioner Rushing and Commissioner Vandembosh, who supports the Algonac area where I'm a teacher. The students were excited to hear that you're standing up for their 14th Amendment right. They appreciate it. Thank you. And I got to deliver that news to them after the last meeting on Constitution Day when we heard all about it. I would like to say a few things. One of the good things that came out of all of this mess is that I'm getting to know some great people around the county and in other counties. I'm not in medicine. I'm just a lowly teacher. I don't think we've ever been heroes. What I love about this opportunity is that we get to, we get to speak together and to help to inform each other. And I want to address a few things. One gentleman said Wayne State is very, very reputable, and it is. But what we're learning in this COVID situation, this is a new disease we have never faced before. We can't rely on our old medicine. Can't. We have to learn as we go. And something that's coming out of the health department is no new information. What we're angry about is that there is no new information. So I'm encouraging the health department and others to read as much as we are daily and consider the sources. So yes, Wayne State is reputable, but I'm going to tell you, there's a Lieutenant Colonel Teresa Long, MD, MP, HFS, being duly sworn to pose and state as follows. She's making an affidavit to call an injunction order to stop the vaccines in the military. And yes, Wayne State is reputable, but she got her bachelor's degree from University of Texas Austin, medical degree from University of Texas Health Science Center at Houston Medical School in 2008, field surgeon for 10 years, went on to complete a residency in aerospace and occupational medicine at the U.S. Army School of Aviation Medicine, Fort Rucker, holds a master's in public health, trained in combat readiness at Fort Rucker as an aviation safety officer, additionally trained in medical management. She's board certified in flight aerospace medicine, board eligible in occupational medicine. She also served as a brigade surgeon for First Aviation Brigade, Fort Rucker, Alabama, responsible for certifying the health and mental well-being of 4,000 individuals. I'm urging you to catch up on the new information for us. Stop relying on what we call the old science. Please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. So much has been said that, I wanted to say has been said, so I'm going to skip over some things, but I just want to say, reiterate some things people had said. But I just want to say, reiterate some things people had said. During the entire COVID pandemic, every level of government has ignored the established multidisciplinary approach to pandemic and emergency response. Those in the career fields of industrial hygiene, occupational health and safety, and employee health and safety are the only professionals credentialed to speak on pathogen protection measures. The people who demand that everyone must wear masks are healthcare professionals who are not the credentialed experts. In other words, doctors. Doctors are not credentialed to speak on, advise, or demand people to wear masks unless they are an occupational doctor. Even virologists and immunologists are not credentialed to advise on pathogen protection. Instead, our leaders defer to Dr. Fauci, who is the director of the NIAID, but he does not have any credentials on pathogen protection measures as he seems to think he does, as so do many other doctors, too many, and they are all guilty of malpractice. Our entire country has been led astray with fraudulent information that has resulted in dividing us, all the way down to our local county and even within our own families. I'll never forget the time my daughter and I were in a local store and a gentleman, I'm using that term loosely, right now because there was nothing gentle about him, when he accused both of us of trying to kill his elderly mother simply because we weren't wearing masks. I'm sure my daughter won't forget it either. The ignorance on the safety and efficacy of masks is shocking. Suffice to say, Fauci is a criminal, and he's not the only one. I'd also like to say, the three-minute format of the citizen comment portion of the county board meetings, it's great for citizens to let you, the commissioners, know what our thoughts are on any matter. However, they are not very productive in making change happen. I would like to ask the board to consider hosting a formal public discussion or a presentation to educate everyone, the board, the citizens, healthcare workers, including the health officer and the Health Department, on pathogen protection and the ineffectiveness in and dangers of forced mask wearing. This reiterates the gentleman who spoke earlier about it. I have already contacted people who have the proper credentials and willing to come to...
20 seconds.
Okay. Willing to come to... Thank you.
What is your name? I didn't hear it, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I've already contacted people who have the proper credentials and willing to come to St. Clair County for such an event. Think about it. We have the opportunity to make St. Clair County a leader in this fight. When this is finally over, what side of history do you want to be on? And just a thought, hearing people speak, I also would like to let everyone know that my family and I, we all caught COVID. The worst part was all the, you know what you have to deal with. But fortunately, I had done my homework and I called a doctor, not in this county. I described my symptoms. He says, "You have COVID." I said, "I haven't been tested." He goes, "My diagnosis is much more accurate than those tests." Don't get tested. He gave me a prescription for hydroxychloroquine, zinc, Z-Pak, and of course, I had to add vitamin D to the protocol. Symptoms turned around immediately. I didn't die of any heart problems from hydroxychloroquine like we're led to believe. And from what research I've done, it sounds like ivermectin may be even more effective. So with that, it just breaks my heart to see people talk about COVID and either they're going to die or they're going to have some lifelong negative effects. Yeah, maybe if it's not treated, that will happen. We're not treating people. If these therapeutics were not banned or withheld from us, or had doctors brave enough to use their medical expertise, their education they paid so much for, and realize this stuff works, we'd be in much better shape. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm Jordan. Last month, a woman spoke about it, her daughter, who said, "Many of you guys acted like middle school girls at the last county meeting. I was that kid." Last time I attended one of the meetings, I was very disappointed in how you guys had acted. And having never been to a meeting, I expected it to be very professional and all that, and it wasn't. Someone, you guys didn't invite a county member because of political beliefs differences. One of you was daydreaming, it looked like, and during roll calls, it took three times for you to respond. And my main point is that it's very sad how many lives have been lost within the past two years, and not from COVID, a curable disease, but from suicide. In 2018 and 2019, suicides decreased a lot, a whole lot, and they increased a lot this past two years. I have lost someone close to me. My friend had lost her sister due to suicide because of all this mess that is going on. And it is very hard to lose someone who is close to you and especially in that way. Due to unnecessary mandates last school year, you guys chose to enforce these mandates, and I had to be online all year, not knowing that this mess would be going on for another year. I lost my 4.0 GPA, now can no longer qualify for certain qualifications like the Ted Stein Award because I found out I was taking ninth grade math in seventh grade. We have been lucky enough that you have rescinded all COVID restrictions, Dr. Merkentant, but it is extremely disappointing that you only rescinded these orders because you were going to lose state funding. I guess, I guess it is true what they say, that money speaks louder than words, but I guess in our case, it's that logic speaks louder than words. Thank you.
Jessica Schulte. Wow, kudos to her for standing up here and talking because right now, I'm anxiety bad. A lot of what I had to say was already said. I wanted to address Dr. Merkentant. Wow. How lucky we are to have a doctor as our health director, right? You would think. Her job is to produce essential services to the public, like mammogram screenings and nutrition and education for prenatal care and senior elderly screenings, all that stuff. This stuff's great, right? But she doesn't get to mandate things for us. You don't get to tell us how to take care of our health. You can recommend that for us, you can educate us, you can provide services for us, but you can't tell us what to do. I take care of my health very differently than a lot of people. I take about 10 supplements a day. I use plant-based products. I exercise and I look for all the ways I can improve my wellness. I don't care about illness. My doctor is of wellness. Illness comes after. So the Health Department, I've used it. I was a young mom, 16 years old. I went there for prenatal care, I've gone it for other things, and I respected that. But when she started infringing on what I chose to do for the health of myself and my family, now we have a problem. When you told me that I had to wear a mask and told my children they had to wear masks at school, even though we weren't wearing a mask anywhere since May 2020, and fortunately, we have not been sick at all because of the steps we take for our wellness, I started getting mad. I started getting angry. When I'm told how to take care of my body and take care of my family, it's freedom of choice. We live in America. We get to choose how we take care of our lives, correct? I mean, that's why we live in America. We don't get told what to do unless we pass the law. None of this has been passed into law. So I say, I continue to say, I will respect you doing your job if you continue to make recommendations, if you continue to educate and offer these things for us, but do not tell me how to take care of me and my family. Period.
At this time, clerk has public comment to enter into the record.
The first is from a Rosalyn Sampier. Commissioners, anti-maskers, and anti-vaxers say they have a right to not wear masks or get vaccinated. But what about the rights of other people to not be infected by a deadly disease because of somebody else's choice? Do their rights not matter? By refusing to wear masks and get vaccinated, anti-maskers and anti-vaxers choose to endanger the health, safety, and lives of others. They are saying their freedom of choice is more important than the freedoms of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness of their neighbors. More freedoms are lost if anti-maskers and anti-vaxers get their way. Government must make decisions that result in the greatest good for the greatest number of people. The next one is Susan Amato. This is addressed to Commissioner Dunn. My name is Susan Amato, and I served as Director of Health Education and Planning for the St. Clair County Health Department for 23 years. I am deeply troubled by the recent resolution to promote general welfare. I do not see how any of the components serve to secure the general welfare of St. Clair County citizens. It does the quite opposite. We have a well-credentialed, passionate, and incredibly dedicated medical health officer charged with protecting the health of our residents and advising us how to best prevent infection of the current pandemic. Quarantine contact tracing and in certain cases, vaccine mandates are time-tested in scientifically-based methods necessary to prevent infection. Eliminating these important mitigation activities will only increase the amount of infection, disease, and death within our community. The state legislature has given Dr. Merkentant no choice but to remove these practices, which is clearly not in our best interest. On what basis do elected officials think they have the knowledge and expertise to make decisions about my health? We need Dr. Merkentant's expertise and leadership to see us through the pandemic. Firing her is irresponsible and dangerous to the health of St. Clair County residents. The last is Stephanie Armstrong-Helton. I want to let you know how truly disappointed I am in the leadership of St. Clair County. Allowing individuals who have no scientific or medical background to undermine the health and safety of our county is simply unacceptable. I work for national healthcare system, and I can tell you, the folks fighting this deadly pandemic on the front lines are exhausted, burned out, and their resources are depleted. Are you aware that hospitals in two states have had to enact crisis levels of care? That means the important lifesaving medical care is being denied because of the volume of COVID-19 patients being cared for in hospital corridors are taking precedence. This is all because those two states have chosen to not demand health protection such as mask-wearing, vaccines, and quarantines. Closer to home, a lifesaving surgery to remove colon cancer was postponed three months due to the latest Michigan surge in our region. Now my coworker's sister is riddled with cancer throughout her body. She will likely not survive. The death toll related to this pandemic is too great to take the health of our family, friends, and loved ones for granted. I have watched Dr. Annette Merkentant offer measured and steady guidance since the beginning of the pandemic. How shameful that some members of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners have failed to support her decisions to follow lifesaving guidance, all because they are bowing to ridiculous political pressure that is not grounded in science and in many cases, not even rooted in reality. This is not a political issue, it's a matter of public health and safety. The preamble of the U.S. Constitution calls all of us to promote the general welfare of our nation and each other. I would request that St. Clair County leadership keep in mind that our general welfare includes the ability to live without fear or threat of infection and disease from others who refuse to contribute to the well-being of our community through vaccine, mask-wearing, and other mitigation efforts to eradicate this pandemic on behalf of us all. I trust Dr. Merkentant and her commitment to the health of our community. Her support is needed. I also urge you and your colleagues to support mask-wearing, greater efforts to get people vaccinated, and other measures designed to alleviate the spread of this deadly virus.
That concludes public comment. Moving on to updates, Public Health Order Corporate Counsel update.
Thank you. I asked for the opportunity to speak. I asked for the opportunity to speak because of something that happened at the September 16th meeting. What they say about lawyers is what you have is your reputation, about getting work done for people, getting it done on time, responding. Can't hear? Sorry. Sorry. And on September 2nd, Commissioner Rushing presented a number of questions that he wanted answered. I told him I would get those answers, and I did. And what happened on the 16th is I got a call from, well, I got a text from one person and a call from another one, and they said, "Are you, did you watch this meeting?" And I said, "No, I, there was nothing I needed to be there for, or if I needed to be there for something, I would have been there." And one of them said, "Well, Commissioner Rushing called you a liar." And I said, "What?" He said, "He said, you told him you were going to get him answers to his questions, and you didn't do it." And I thought, "Well, I'm not sure that means a liar, but it's pretty close." And the other person said, "He threw you under the bus." And I said, "In what way?" And they said, "Well, you were supposed to get some work done for the county and the board and report back to them, and you didn't do it." And I found that kind of interesting because I did. And what happened is, I've got the emails and the dates, and the first email was on September 17th of 2021, and what I did is I sent an email to the entire county board and to Mr. Bohm, and I said that I heard that these claims were made regarding me, and I copied Mr. Rushing. And then Mr. Rushing responded to me, and he said, "I guess I need to see the email you sent me." So what I did is I sent him an email, and what that email included was one that I sent out on September 8th, so the meeting was on the 2nd. Friday, we were working on it, the 3rd, then it was Labor Day weekend, and we're into the next week, and we're finishing things up. And what I said to him is, "Here's a letter I sent asking," it was actually an email, "for any input to make sure I didn't miss anything." And I sent this out, and I said, "Good afternoon." It was people at the meeting who were taking notes, a bunch of them up here. And I said, "Attached is a draft opinion letter, which I believe covers all the major questions that were presented at the BOC meeting." I tried to keep it simple and understandable. In other words, I tried to minimize the legal mumbo jumbo. Please let me know if there's anything you think I missed, or we missed, because there was another young lady in our firm working on it. And I didn't hear back, so then I sent another email out on the same day. The request for comment was at 2:38 PM on the 8th, and I sent an email out on the same day at 3:55 after receiving no comments. And it said, "Attached is our legal opinion regarding the issues raised at the BOC meeting last Thursday." And then I mentioned in that meeting, the Resurrection School case, I'm sure probably a lot of you have read it, that deals with constitutional issues. And I noted that that had been decided by the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. So I said, "Attached is our legal opinion," and this went to all the commissioners, including Mr. Rushing, "is our legal opinion regarding the issues raised at the BOC meeting last Thursday. The Resurrection School case is also attached. This is the Third Circuit Court of Appeals that addressed the constitutional issues raised at the meeting. The information can be posted on the county website and the Health Department website." And I had to say that because the county's waiving any attorney-client privilege so it can go on the website. That was followed the next day, on the 9th, by an email to all of the commissioners and me from Ms. Hepting stating, "A link has been added to the county's main page on our website under Quick Links. This will take you to both legal opinion and frequently asked questions." And then finally, I followed up. I heard back from Mr. Rushing, and he said, "Thank you, I did get that." And then he asked some more questions, which I answered. And you might say, "Why are you doing, why raise all this?" Well, it's important for two reasons. It's our reputation. If we have a client that asks us to do something, like Mr. Rush- If we have a client that asks us to do something, like Mr. Rushing did, we're going to respond. And if it means, and we've had to get things done for clients, some of it, the county, and they can attest to it, on crazy aggressive timelines, but it had to be done, because the business had to be done. And I got this done. And then what I asked for is a meeting with Mr. Rushing. And I have no problem with Dave. I really don't. He told me he missed it. And I'm going to tell you, I know he has a business, and I know regarding all of this, he's getting scads of emails. I know he is. Probably some that aren't very pleasant to read. And I get, I'll tell you, there's some days I get 150 emails in a day. It drives me crazy. And so, we miss things. And I told him, I took him at his word, and I asked him if we could have one agreement, and that is, if there's any time I let him down, and that he's waiting for something for me, don't cream me in a meeting, please, unless I deserve it. And if I deserve it, and I just completely drop the ball, then nail me. But if, if something's missing, pick up the phone, or shoot me an email and say, "Hey, you promised this opinion. Where's it at?" And I would have said, "Dave, you already got it." And I would have sent it again, attached it again. And so, I needed to clear the air in terms of kind of a mark on our reputation, in terms of not getting the work done that our clients ask us to do. But to me, it brings up a bigger point, and people have raised it tonight. I have to tell you, I left a grandson's football game to be here, and I missed the end. It sounds like it was a crazy ending. And in the guy, I was leaving, and the guy said, "Well, you gotta have to hate to go to this and be there all night." I said, "You know what? I love it." And the reason I love it is because what I said to him is, "Only in America." Because all of you have the right to come and have your say, and petition your government, and express your views, and to be heard, and I respect that, and I respect all of you. And what I hope through this whole process, because it's not going to end, this disease isn't going to end, and the disagreements and the controversy aren't going to end, I just hope we can treat each other with respect, as people have asked tonight, and all of you, I really believe have. There's a little murmuring, and I get that, but it's generally been very respectful. I appreciate that. Dave and I, we don't have any problem, and I know that it was, I really take him at his word that he didn't see it, and given the amount of emails, I'm sure he gets it and I get, I miss things. But in the future, we'll make sure we communicate better, and I wanted all of you to know that that opinion got done. It's posted, I just checked again tonight on the quick links under the county website. It says, "Legal opinion," you probably read it, and it says, "Legal opinion," and "Frequently Asked Questions from the Health Department." And I clicked, and the legal opinion's there, and that resurrection school case is there.
Is there a fight to all the board, the communication?
Pardon me?
Is the better communication applied to all of the board members?
Well, I don't know what they, all of them do, but I just want you to know, all of everybody here, I respect your, and I know they all do, your ability to be here, they listen intently to what you're saying, and I just hope we can respect each other's views and get through this, because it's sure as heck isn't easy. And I mentioned before, I've had grandkids in quarantine, it got schedules messed up, school messed up. It's really, really hard, and we all get it. So anyways, that's.
I could respond to, you and I did have a conversation in regards to it, that it was not sent to me personally, which that is what I was expecting. I didn't know that I had to go to the county health department website and then click on an additional link. So, I did not get the answers until I got another email from you explaining where it was at. I thought I was going to get those answers sent directly to me. I did not, and I apologize.
No, they were sent to you directly.
Not, not without going to the link.
No, no, you didn't have to go to a link. I sent you an email to every commissioner and Ms. Hepting, and everybody else got it, and that was to you, was one of the commissioners that attached the opinion in the resurrection school case, and then Carrie Hepting, the next day, notified all the commissioners. They can also access it by a link. It was emailed to you, and I sent you proof of that.
Well, I found the one for the health department. That's where I got the information.
And you said, "You must have missed it." And I don't want to belabor it, but I emailed it to you, and I emailed it to every commissioner at once. And so, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's the end of it, but given the shadow it cast on me, and really, me not doing my job, that was the claim. I just, I just did a face plant and didn't do it. I had to respond. So anyways, enough said.
Any corporate initiatives this evening?
None.
No old business, we'll move on to new business? I have a motion to accept the proclamation recognizing Knights of Columbus.
So moved.
It's a proclamation. If you can, talk into the mics. So, we have a motion to support for the proclamation for the Knights of Columbus. I will actually be giving that to them for this weekend.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, intent for general resolution.
Yeah, this one is one I asked for. We've gotten numerous resolutions.
David.
I want to make this very simple. I just want to have a motion to have the intent for a general welfare resolution. If I get a second, then we can have a discussion. On that, we're going to have, I'll start first, but we're going to have Gary Fletcher take a look at it and review some of the ones we have, I believe, and then draft a resolution that is St. Clair County-specific. So, and I think there will be support for a lot of things in them, but he's going to draft it for us as county commissioners, and then forward it to our board for potential approval.
I was just going to say, we get a lot of cut and paste, no different than like the Second Amendment. I think we got 13 different resolutions, and everybody wanted them to adopt this one or adopt that one, and we just talked about, why don't we take a look at some, like you said, some specific language? That was a cut and paste thing that was sent to us. And so, let Gary, you know, put something together, because when you ask to put, and Dave, you brought up a point before about, we do add things to the agenda last minute, but those things have always go through Carrie's review, they go through Gary's review, they may come up. So, that, you know, process protocol, call it what you may, versus just coming in here and say, "I want this on the agenda this evening."
I explained in the email that normally, we don't get the agendas until Friday. Everybody was made aware of this on the 16th. So, when I didn't see it on the agenda, because my kids did fly in from California, which I told you, and I didn't get a chance to do the agendas until Tuesday, so I wasn't there, and that's why I asked to have it on. And I think this is something fairly simple, that we did want to potentially address it at some time, so that's why I did it.
What would help me is if, if all of you could send an email to me or to Carrie, kind of what your thoughts, it should be in it, because I've seen four or five different versions, and they're all different. So, otherwise, I'm going to be groping in the dark. It needs to be what, reflect what you want, not what I want.
Well, I guess I'm handling this. Any other discussions on it?
So, I have a question for clarification for you, Gary. So, let's say we come to an agreement on the resolution, and let's say that it passes, but the COVID situation escalates. Does it hold any, does it supersede public health, or would it supersede anything from a state or federal mandate?
The, as to the Health Department, I've offered the opinion, and other lawyers that specialize in what I do from different areas of the state have said, the Health Department, Health Department Director makes the calls on public health orders and issues of public safety. And that's been decided by the courts, and it's just, it's the way that is, and we put that in our opinion as to why it is. The county doesn't have the right to override federal mandates, and the one that's obviously looming is the vaccination mandate. And I think it's got serious legal problems, and the reality is, so what President Biden did is directed OSHA to issue an order. OSHA has no jurisdiction over state governmental agencies, so they have no jurisdiction over the county. So, what that means is, OSHA would have to pass the rules, then the, then they would have to be sent on to the state of Michigan, and the grant, or the current administration would have to make a decision, the Whitmer administration, to have my OSHA, the state version of it, issue a mandatory vaccine order. And I have a whole lot of doubt that that's going to happen, given, you know, her numbers have gone bad, and she's, she's drawn back a long ways. So, and the other thing I would encourage you to do, I can send it to you, and we can post it on the website if you want, is I've reviewed the executive orders, and I think they're very narrowly drafted. It's contract, federal contractors, federal employees, and certain types of organizations that receive federal, either Medicare or Medicaid money, and it's generally healthcare facilities, like hospitals, dialysis units, things like that. But if you want, I can send those to Carrie, and you can look at them. They can be posted on the website, so people can be aware of them. I don't think they're anywhere near as broad as he described when he verbalized what he intended to do.
Sure.
Correct me if I'm wrong, too, Gary. Resolutions, they're not binding. We can pass a resolution saying we want to tell all the employers in St. Clair, they can't have mask mandates. I'm just using that as an example. That does not bind an employer if they want to have a mask mandate, or if they want to have vaccines. So, these resolutions are purely political statements, you know, essentially being made by commissioners. These aren't rule of the law, those, that stuff. So, I just want to be very clear on that, too.
It's a statement by the county board that we support this, we oppose that, and you can list those things, and the board does that quite often, and those, a lot of them get sent to Lansing.
We don't do it a ton, because we could have Roe versus Wade one day, we could have something the next day. I can dream up 27 of them.
I shouldn't say a lot, but I.
And argue about these things.
About every third or fourth meeting, we see something supporting the position of the Michigan Association of Counties on some legislation, that kind of thing. And yeah, no, it's something you can do as a statement of, this is the opinion of this board as to what should be done on these issues. Ultimately, then, obviously, it's not going to trump the federal government, it's not going to trump my OSHA, but it'll, it'll be the county board basically taking a stand as to what its position is.
I have one question on the mandate from Washington. If you, you said it was Medicare/Medicaid funding?
Yes.
We were told at one of our emergency, I think it was a chiefs meeting, that even if we received grant money, that we would have to either pay the grant money back or vaccinate, even on the municipal level.
Yeah, it doesn't say that. I'll send you the order. I wanted to, because I've heard a lot of stuff, I've heard that somebody said this, somebody else said that, I've heard different things in writing, and finally, I just tracked down the actual orders, and they were way different than I kind of assumed they would be based on what I heard and what I read.
Because some of our, some of the communities in the South were concerned, because we've gotten some decent-sized grants in the last couple of years.
Yeah, it's federal funding, but it's healthcare agency, or healthcare facilities, and it even gives examples, hospitals, dialysis units, home healthcare, but I'll send it to everybody, so you can look at it yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
That's my line.
Okay.
Yeah, whose meeting is this?
Any, any other questions? All right, we'll take a vote. Do you want to, do we do roll call, or?
You can do it voice.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Other human services matters to be brought up tonight? Seeing none? Information only?
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
I do have a question.
Oh, sure.
Because there was numerous letters in there. I'm going to guess 20, at least 20 or so that was in our agenda. I've got 110, and that's all the ones I printed off. I could have printed another 100, taking the other side. And I'm sure you've got these emails, too, but these are all in support of Dr. Merkantot, and no negative ones, or not negative, but ones that didn't support Dr. Merkantot. I was wondering why we didn't include some of those.
So, any person that sent an email to administration directly, that's what was included in your packet? I know commissioners have been receiving emails separately, but this was addressed to administration, asking us to pass it on to commissioners. And there were, everything we received is in there, and there were letters, both for and against, in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to touch on that. I have received, you know, early on, there were, you know, a lot of negative, recently, tremendous amount of positive. I mean, we have, I think everybody on this board's received probably 104, 100 gifts, 200, whatever the number is, but there's been a ton of emails for both. And I just want to say, I've dealt with Annette for quite some time here, and I think Steve Samasco did a pretty good job of summing it up earlier about dealing with Annette. Always found her to be fair, you know, conscientious, you know, so on and so forth. I know from a budgetary perspective, she's led the Health Department, and so Steve obviously didn't agree with the last piece of it, but he had some, you know, kind things, I think, to say, and there's somebody that has actually served with you in your capacity, Commissioner Wall, served with Pam for lots of years, she's in here, too. So, you know, I don't think Annette is the, you know, big, mean, evil person that, that we all think that she is. That's just my little narrative.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Let's give them a minute.
Ah.
Yeah, I might.
Yeah.
What time is it?
I know, it got, I was getting these texts, and they said.
The other team going back.
Then they scored.
Health Department.
So, it was eight to six.
Didn't even see it.
I'll give it to the board, just so we can get it.
All right, thanks.
They're going to have to, they're going to have to get it.
Good player, my son, Jason.
He's the nicest thing I've ever seen.
I'll be there.
No big reds. Just wanted to hear you yell one more time. Michael?
You're right.
Right.
Who won our, the final, do you know, in the league?
That came from Lansing.
Tommy Shaper and Brian Murray were in it. They lost.
Bob Kirshman? Okay. And Bligh.
That's the budget loss?
Tom Bligh. And they won it? No kidding. Ah, well, that's cool, though. That's, yeah, that's what you want. that's what you want.